Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board for Monday, January 9, 2023. Yeah? Thank you. Welcome to the Planning Board Agenda for Monday, January 9, 2023. It is exactly 6:00 PM, so we will call the meeting to order with a roll call. Sherri Corrigan.
Here.
Mike Baptiste.
Here.
Sam Corbett.
Here.
Carl Schultz.
Here.
Jane Gleason is...
I have her on here.
Okay, she was going to attempt to join us remotely. So she is really there. I can count her as...
She is... Give us a second just one second.
Okay. There she is. Thanks for joining us, Jane.
My pleasure.
Is that inside the new ride?
Yes.
I was just showing Sherri your new toy. It's very cool. So we have a full board with Jane Gleason joining remotely. Preliminary business. We have some approval of meeting minutes. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of 11:14, 11:28, 12:09, 2:25. We get all kinds of years in the high benefit start over. I would accept a motion move... Motion to accept the minutes of 11:14, 2022, 11:28, 2022, 12:09, 2022... 12:19. 2:25 of 2019, 5:20 of 2019, 9:19 of 2019, 11:18 of 2019, 3:14 of 2022, and 3:28 of 2022. And I would request or entertain a motion to accept them as to form.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Carl Schultz. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
I vote aye as to form.
Yes.
I have no comment on content.
Or accuracy.
Or accuracy.
Jane?
I also would vote yes as to form, but not as to content in particular. I was not present on the board for four of those, particularly as clerk. I think that that's important, that that get on the record.
Yep, I agree. I also will vote aye as to content.
No, as to form.
I mean as to form and not to content and accuracy. So we have an unanimous vote, 6-0-0. We'll sign those and get those back to the planning office so I don't get reprimanded. Oh, Ken brought gifts. What'd you bring?
Yeah, I did. Swag.
Swag, cool. Before we get into tonight... Yeah, before we get into tonight's agenda too deeply, Carl Schultz is going to bring us up to speed on the work that he and Jane have been doing on the zoning... The drafts of the zoning bylaw amendments that we're trying to get prepared for Springtown meeting. Carl, so yours?
Are we going to talk about Borrego, or you want to... Are we deferring this to new projects?
That are... They're going to be continued.
Right.
Right, okay. Yeah, we'll jump on that. Item three, real quick, 7-20 Borrego Solar Systems, 27 Charge Pond Road. And item four, 9-20 Borrego Solar Systems, 150 Tohantet Road, were mistakenly added to the agenda for tonight. They are actually on the agenda for the 23rd. So anybody that is here tonight, whether it be in person or remotely, I apologize for the mistake. And we will be hearing those both on January 23rd. Okay, Carl, it's all yours.
Great. So Jane and I have taken an action item to look at some of the bylaws for improvement, particularly trying to get ready for the downtown redevelopment district. I am looking at Article 14 and 15, and Jane is looking at creating a new article. So if Jane wants to give an update on that when I'm done that, she can do that. So I just want to give an update. The approach that the board is taking for looking at Articles 14 and 15, which look at land use permits, is to really clarify the distinction between site plan and special permit. Over the years, in our bylaws, those two items have become conflated. And so we're looking at trying to make clear distinctions between where a site plan is applied, where special permits are applied, and what those items are. Further, we're working to clarify any ambiguities in any of the other sections related to those items, and fix numbering, and consistency in paragraph headings and subparagraph headings and things like that, with the intent of making the bylaws more readable and applicable, and hopefully simplified. The other thing that we're attempting to do is move out of the bylaws, those things that do not need to be regulatory in nature and rather are procedural. So we'll move that into a separate rules and regulations slash procedure document, similar to what we have for subdivision rules and regulations that will apply to site plans and special permits. So to that end, I have, for the board's room, and I'm not going to go in depth, I promised to keep this to five minutes, have begun reorganizing Article 14 and Article 15, and then creating, moving those sections that seem to apply to rules and regulations into that third document. So I provided a rough outline to the board so you can see where I'm at so far. There's no content to really review, but basically, two comments on Article 14. I've tried to restructure it so it deals with administration. However, in my opinion, and I'll defer to the board over the next couple of weeks or months, and from reviewing other town bylaws, there really isn't a need for two separate bylaws, I don't think. I think that we can achieve and keep all the content by putting all the land use permit items into one bylaw. Whether we can achieve that or not is subject to you guys' input, and then, of course, public hearing, and then ultimately the town. But I think if we get them all into one bylaw, it will be easier. But for the moment, I've got two different bylaws. So Article 14, I've right now grouped all items that are related to what I considered administrative kinds of items, enforcement, application process, how the decisions are made, and fees and things like that, some of which might also be applicable to the procedure or rules and regs. I've also pulled in out of... There's the appeals process. I've enumerated how decisions are appealed, all things that were in the documents before, but tried to make it clear. There's three levels of appeal, appeal to the zoning board, appeal to the court, and then talk about repeat applications. And then Article 15, I have focused on all land use permits, which starts with special permit, then site plan review, variance, and let's see, modifications, and items like that. I tried to clearly enumerate, as it's called out, you know, Article 3, Section 320, is also related to this, but I tried to point out which board is the appropriate authority in those cases. So that's what I'm working on, to be clear. In the past couple of cases, or past couple of meetings, we've heard applicants speak to the fact that site plan review and special permit have been conflated in the past. So we're going to try and clarify that. And then, then the last document that I'm working on is really the procedures, and that's really what are the application requirements, what information is required, the evaluation standards, and then relationship to vehicle circulation, subdivision plan, and other things. Mostly all words that were in the previous document. I have been, as I said, reviewing other town bylaws and where I thought they might have a section that is consistent with what we've done, that's clear or more clear in the wording. I've kind of brought that in and laid it in there. I'm making a couple of recommendations for some changes, which I'll point out once they're all done. So there will be some subtle changes. I'll highlight where we have, where I've said I think we can make an improvement. So for example, as an example of that, in the past, we have had site plans presented to us, and by the strict rules of the current bylaws, we can't grant waivers. I've introduced a clause that says with a majority, a supermajority vote of the board, whoever the review board is, waivers can be granted if it's in the best interest of the town. So that, there's some more flexibility in there. The other thing is I've added a paragraph with a little more procedural flexibility that grants the town planner some latitude to move very minor modifications through the process without bringing them to the board, and there's some criteria for that, which all, everyone will have the right to review and approve. So that's what I meant by making some improvement. Right now, I have a lot of text. I have everything moved around. It doesn't read smoothly front to back, which I'm going to count on help from Sherri, and also Mr. Buckland. And hopefully, we'll come up with something that's consistent with what we had before, more clear on places where it was confusing, and helps support the process and procedures and getting the applications through the board appropriately while still protecting the rights in... of the town. So my goal is to have a rough draft in Mike's hands end of this month, and then we'll schedule some iterations, and then Ken's got some ideas on public hearings. So all this will have to go through public hearing and approval by... At the town meeting, so I'm not just ramming this through, but that's... Hopefully, we'll have it all ready for Springtown meeting.
That'd be great.
So I have roughly, it's all organized. I have all the text. It just needs to be reread and synthesized.
And have a shine on it?
Yeah.
Have a shine put on it?
Yeah, and then the last decision we really need to make, and I'll talk to Ken a lot about this, is can we get rid of Article 14? And will we lose anything by doing that? Not any of the content, but just...
Just the article itself.
The article itself.
Okay, very cool. Thank you very much.
Did I say under five minutes?
I think you did. I think you did.
Mr. Chairman, may I direct a question to?
Of course.
Carl, is it best for us to direct our questions to you directly at a later time or in writing? What's the best way for us to start providing input to you?
How would you like that to go? I mean, we have not really planned open discussion in these meetings. We had discussed having a workshop. Right now, if you want to send me...
Sure.
I think just direct communication singularly would be best.
Okay.
Okay, and then anybody on the board who wants to see the full text, I'll send it to you. It's 35 pages, I think, right now. That's just the outline.
Well, that was 27 pages.
That was the other version, yeah. So let me know if you want to see the text as it evolves. Sherri, I'll send you text. I won't, I'm not going to put it in Word yet. I'm going to just send text documents.
Okay.
I have a text document for each paragraph, so we can edit each paragraph, move it around. And then Ken's going to give us a new template for the Word for style. That's where I'm at.
Awesome. Thank you.
May I ask Jane, or she's going to...
I was just going to say, concurrently, Jane has been working on Article 17?
Yes. It's currently named Article 17, but there's been some discussion. It's for a new type of overlay district, a redevelopment district, but it does not really fit into the two Article 4 overlay districts. So it was proposed to us as Article 17. There's some discussion about making it Article 4B, and making the current Article 4, Article 4A. But we are looking at the possibility of there being additional redevelopment districts. So we're looking to make it a whole new article of its own. But this one is for Wareham Village, and it includes information that will go in multiple other articles, like dimensional and density regulations, and design standards and guidelines and all of that, but the bulk of it will be in the new article, whether it's 17 or 4B. We've been working with the Redevelopment Authority and the representatives from the Board of Selectmen, and they have given us a draft that we are sort of using as the basis for the new article. I think the toughest, or one of the difficult parts of it, is to come up with design guidelines that really get us to results that are what we're looking for, and which means really defining what the results are that we want to make those guidelines. And that can be a little bit of forecasting or soothsaying. So that takes a fair amount of thought to get you where you want to be. But this is an entirely new article, so we're not drawing from older material. So hopefully, we can get this together for Springtown meeting. We'll see. But that's the gist of what we're looking at.
Okay, thank you very much. Both Jane and Carl have been working their tails off on this project, so we really appreciate everything that you're doing, trying to make our processes clearer and a little easier on both the proponents and on the town. Okay. Under preliminary business, Article number five, Woodwin Pines Bay Point partial release of the tripartite agreement for Phase 2 and review of tripod agreement for Phase 1. Do we have someone here to speak to this?
Jim Fay said he was sick and was unable to attend tonight.
All right, so he's requesting a continuance?
No, he's requesting that you proceed as submitted.
Well, I had some questions. He's not here to ask them, so I don't know how successful we're going to be. Let me get my questions here. So I read Mr. Rowley's review, which he was gracious enough to get to us before his retirement, and there was some bullet points in Charlie's review and then Tim's response that didn't completely clarify some of the line items. And I actually ended up coming up with a reduction, not huge, but I had a reduction from my own perspective from 634,126 to 59201. And that was based on... I hate being blind. Items, Section 17, electric utilities, which had to do with the pump not being wired yet. Charlie had a notation on that. Item 12, the force main, no testing. There was asserted that there was no testing needing from the sewer department, but I didn't see a letter from the sewer department to that effect. Item 14, manhole frames and covers, there was some concern there from Charlie. Force main cleanout manholes. Item 15, not installed per his foreman. That had been completed, but there was no confirmation of such fact. It was just a statement from Tim that it wasn't done, or that it had been done, but we had nothing to prove that. Item 35, the asphalt binder with the berms. There was a notice from Charlie to reduce the amount by a specific amount, and that didn't get done. And then the pump station, which was not connected from Eversource, there was a suggestion from Charlie that that be reduced, and it didn't get done. So I came up with the total deductions of 42,125.
So, Mr. Chair, this has been on our agenda for quite some time. I would like to make a motion that we release the funds as amended by your discussion, and then when Mr. Fay and his representatives can be here, we can discuss the open items.
We can discuss the 42,000 that's kind of in question.
Right. And that's, I'm making that motion, and we need to be clear that we're enumerating what those adjustments are that you just went through. Mr. Buckland, did you get those adjustments, or you can...
I can give him my notes.
Yeah, if you give me the notes, I can pass them on to Jim Fay.
Okay.
Could you repeat the final number?
Okay, thank you.
Before we move to a motion real quick, is there anybody else that has comments on this? Okay, so we have...
How do we send a message?
What's that?
Can we send a message to him? Mr. Fay's had a record of avoiding the issue since this project started.
Well, I think this is a good start by saying we're not going to give you everything you're asking for because your work's not finished. I mean, to Charlie's point, Charlie went out there and spent quite a bit of time and confirmed that a lot of the work that he's requesting the funds be released for has indeed been completed. So I think it's only right that we consider releasing those funds. I think, you know, his... Well, I'm not even going to go there. So we have a motion on the table to release the amended tripartite agreement, funds of 592,001, noting a 42,125 reduction from the requested amount based on feedback from Mr. Rowley, the town engineer. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Jane?
Aye.
We have unanimous vote, 6-0-0.
We need to get these things off here.
Yep, I agree, 100%. I'm so confident, I'm going to walk this over to Ken's office right now.
Are you going to discuss the second part of that item, tripartite agreement for Phase 1?
The... So the second half is the review of tripartite agreement for Phase 1. Now, is this... This is, this whole project is confusing as it gets. So is this the one where we're still haven't seen the stamped?
No, the one we haven't seen the stamped was really Phase 2.
Okay.
So I believe Ken has that document, right? The stamped Phase 2 covenant release?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one's been filed on my end records, yeah.
Yeah, so we just...
We just need to get it uploaded to the site, because I went looking for it, I could not find it.
It was not on the site, yeah. We have to get it up there.
Okay, so this goes back to the very beginning. This is the first agreement, the Phase 1 covenant, and I've been doing a lot of research. Mr. Buckland and I met with Mr. Fay. I'll give you my opinion of the status, and then, I'm not sure what the next step is. So this, the covenant for Phase 1, I can never find any documentation that was properly released in terms of the tripartite agreement. Mr. Fay's attorney says it's probably a non-issue because the tripartite agreement was recorded and supersedes it. But moving beyond that, the tripartite, that tripartite agreement was secured through the original lender, and I forget the name of it, it was Bay Bank or whomsoever that was. However, that bank no longer holds the mortgage. Mr. Fay has paid the mortgage off. That surety no longer exists, and the tripartite agreement has expired and was never extended. So at this point, we really don't have an agreement or any funds in advance or in surety for the remaining work. Mr. Fay is committed to completing the remaining work, but my opinion is, is that we do not have any surety to guarantee that completion. So that is some streetlights, some work on the sidewalks. Some of that work has brought forward into Phase 2 because of the mods. But at this point, I don't believe the tripartite agreement for Phase 1 or the surety for Phase 1 is in existence. So we just need to keep our eyes on...
On the progress of that work.
And completing that work. I mean, there's the cuts for the driveways, there's some sidewalk work, there's the street plan, and Mr. Fay continues to assure us that he will complete it.
Well, he still has quite a bit of construction and COs that he's going to be requesting somewhere down the line, so we should be able to keep our eye on the ball with that.
So, Mr. Buckland, did you have any comment on my impression of the status?
No, I think you're rightly concerned about the outcome of the project at this point, and we should consider restoring some kind of surety on the project to finish it up.
Okay, so we could, I suggest, Mr. King, that we add that as a working item on the agenda to reestablish the surety for the remaining...
For Phase 1.
Phase 1.
Okay.
I went over the numbers. Mr. Fay's opinion is it's less than $20,000. Whether that's right or not, we need, well, not Charlie, but somebody to...
To, yeah, just confirm.
Confirm that.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments on that? Okay. Plenary business, item number six, 39-21 Warren QOBZ LLC, 59 Main Street. Request to modifications to the proposed building. Good evening.
Good evening, how are all you guys tonight?
Peaches.
I'm Bill Madden from GAF. Here tonight asking, well, trying to explain a couple of minor modifications that Danny Warren would like to make of his project down there, 59 Main Street. You might recall, we were back, we're here in June. Had some minor modifications made as well. He has, they have since come forth with a couple of other things that they would like to have done down there. And I'm here to present them. I dropped some of them off to the planning board last Thursday. I also sent Ken an email with those attachments that we're talking about. And also with me is Mac, I don't write, Malcolm White. I've worked for Danny Warren as a consultant.
We'd get it in email. There was actually four pages total.
With respect to the four pages, the first page is, which we've labeled as sheet 101, that's the site plan that we prepared. I attached the architectural plans as well just in the event that board members might be interested in knowing the configuration of the building, what it looks like from the exterior, as opposed to just simply a plan view of the footprint of the building. But the changes that are proposed right now, if you're ready for me to explain, if we look at the northerly end of the site, there's a set of stairs that are now shown on the exterior of the deck, the proposed deck and patio that has always been part of the project. Those stairs used to discharge at grade underneath the deck on the patio. And it was, we were requested to revise those and show them exiting on the outside of the patio and what have you. So, if you look at that plan view that we have, the deck exists on the north end of the site. And in lieu of walking through and, let's call it, an opening in the floor of the deck and discharging patrons at the patio below, a wider platform has been designed and stairs are placed on the exterior of the deck. And the discharge of patrons will be at grade, essentially on a small concrete pad that'll be adjacent to the sidewalk. So, that square footage that's being added is that of egress, access and egress to and from that portion of the site. The other portion of the site that we were seeking a small change was on the south side. And it involves an addition 12 feet by 38 feet. That'll be predominantly used for kitchen expansion, or kitchen use in that area. I think that they've had some discussions with some kitchen equipment suppliers and what have you, and some discussion that's been taking place relative to how the flow in the kitchen's gonna work. And they're trying to iron that out. And I think one of the easier solutions was to add this 12 by 38-foot extension. It does show a box on the inside of it, which was intended to be an electric closet. I'm informed that the four walls of that electric closet are no longer necessary. And they'll just provide the necessary clearance in front of the electric panels that is required by code. And that will also free up a little bit more space within that area. That area will also be provided with two egress features, access egress, one on the east side and one on the west side. Both of those will discharge onto the service area that we had originally proposed at the south and at the southeast side of the site. So, that was, that's what is illustrated on the site plan. The architectural plans indicate the dimensional criteria of the floor plan. And the other drawings indicate how the structure will look. This is that rear loading area here as viewed from Main Street, looking at the building. So, you can just see this little shed, not a shed, I guess I'll call it a shed roof, for lack of something better to call it. But that small addition extends out 12 feet from the edge and extends 38 feet back. It's set back from the front corner of the building by about eight feet. The gas meter was slated to be in that corner. So, it was needed for us to slide that building back in order to have the gas meter still installed at the location that was desired. So, this exterior east, the west elevation, that shows the service area entrance to the kitchen. And these are the steps for the deck. And the deck is shown above. The south elevation, we see, this is what the building looks like standing in the British Landing parking lot, looking at Bessie Park. The end of the building is shown just as clapboard siding, shingle roof, tied into the gable end of the existing structure. Couple of sets of egress stairs on each end of that building. So, when deliveries are made to the service area or people come to the service area to perform whatever duties they're there to perform, they can access the building either from the east or the west end. And those, they do have doors that go into the building. This is its elevation. That's the rear. So, that would be looking at it from the marina side of things. And you see, there's the kitchen extension or the storage area, stairs adjacent to the building. And here on the north end is where the open deck is. And below it should be the patio and the egress exit stairs that are shown from that, that were once discharging underneath this roofed area. And the final elevation, north elevation, is looking at it from Bessie Park, looking back toward British Landing. And you can see, this is the deck at the north end of the building. Those are the stairs that are using, that they're gonna utilize for egress and access to that deck. And of course, the south end of the building is the other elevation. Couldn't see it from Bessie Park. It's blocked by the mass of the existing building. So, that's just going through the building, what was proposed, or what is proposed now versus what we had originally. The site plan also indicates a couple of things. It shows where the electric transformer is, where the electric manhole was constructed and what have you. We decided to show that on this plan for clarity's sake, more than anything. The last time we were here, back in June, I think we talked about relocating a dumpster pad and the dumpster enclosure. And I think this revision results in a small modification in orientation of that dumpster pad. For all intents and purposes, it's in the same location. It's just rotated a little bit differently, being parallel to the property line between British Landing and our site. So, those are the revisions that we're asking for today, Mac. I think we're pretty much limited to those this time around. You might recall further that when we did come for the modification back in June, you provided us a letter and some clarity was provided in that letter indicating that the other two buildings that were proposed on the site that we did have some discussion on, they were not approved as part of the site plan approval. So, we understand that. We will be coming back with you, I mean, to you for approval of those two other buildings in reasonably short order. And just for ease of putting the plan together, I did it on this SK or this drawing, one sketch plan. We just did it on 11 by 17 as opposed to... I just wanted to avoid any potential confusion that, you know, everything we're asking for only involves 59. That's the approved building. It doesn't involve anything else but 59. So, that's what we have to present for you tonight. And happy to answer any questions you might have relative to our request.
Thank you all. Questions? Comments?
I do have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, Mr. Madden, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Madden. Can you just restate where this... I don't have all the old plans in front of me. So, where this new structure is, the 12 by 38 addition. In the previous plan, that was, what was there before? It was a deck?
There was nothing there.
Oh, there was nothing there?
No, that's not true, in the elevation.
Sorry, the stairs.
Stairs were there, but there was nothing there? Okay, so this is a new structure?
Yes.
Okay, that was, okay. And just taking me back further, at one point, we were proposing putting the dumpsters in that area. And that got moved in the June revision? Is that when it happened?
Yes.
Yeah, we originally, the dumpsters were gonna be sort of in that space.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm remembering correctly. Okay, so this is a new structure. I do remember in June, we had, we did approve the mod. But we had concerns about the setback. So, what does this do to the setback requirements for the space now that this is a new structure?
We still meet the side yard setback to that structure.
That was my question.
So, I believe the side yard setback is 10 feet in this instance. There's a dimension on the plan that indicates that it's something more than 10.
30.
Yep, 30 and a half feet.
So, it meets the setback?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess, Mr. Buckland, are we gonna get engineer comment from the town engineer? Whatever we call him?
If you want, you can ask him to do that.
Well, the board can decide if we need that. Okay, so this is a new structure. It meets the setback requirements. Does not change the landscape plan?
The transformer location is within the landscape buffer. So, the landscape plan, I think we had, originally, we had the transformer located in that area. And I believe the landscaping was proposed around that transformer.
Okay, because there were concerns about the British Landing residents, about screening and things like that.
Right, well, looking at the, looking, there was, looking at the original plans, there was a staircase with a small covered porch at the top.
Right.
So, print's too small to read, but I'm gonna guess that staircase was probably four feet wide.
Correct.
Yes.
So, we're adding an additional, we're adding an additional eight feet, roughly.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
And it doesn't look like, based on the old plans and these proposed plans, I don't see any encroachment whatsoever into the buffer.
Okay. Except for the transformer.
Except for the transformer, which looks like it's dropped dead center in the buffer zone.
Okay, and if you've got the old plans, the concrete pad, which is also in that space?
Very, very close to where it is now.
Okay.
The only question I would have is, given our experience with Starbucks, have you taken into account the angle of that, access to that dumpster to make sure that the truck can get at it?
Yeah, it should be a straight shot.
Okay, 'cause...
Coming up the driveway.
All right, this is painful for us, I can guarantee you.
Yeah, it's been discussed. The trucks will access from, would be the north entrance, Bill? Directly to the dumpster.
So, they're gonna pick, they're gonna picket?
They're gonna come through the parking lot and go straight in?
Yeah, picket back up, and then they can go out.
And I think that the, I don't know what size dumpsters he's putting, but those pads in that enclosure is a little bit larger than the dumpster itself. So, it does give some, the operator, some opportunity to reconfigure that dumpster in that space.
Just, I don't wanna call it forewarning, but you know how I can be with dumpsters. It's a pet peeve of mine.
It's fine. That's why we're here.
Mike, Sherri, you have any questions? I'll be honest, when I first looked at this and I saw 12 by 38, I was a little concerned. I'm going, eh, that's not a minor modification. That's a building. But personally, I'm not speaking for the others. Knowing now that there was already four feet, four and a half feet committed for a stairwell, we're not really adding a ton more. And it's not changing the relationship of the building to the screening for the folks at British Landing. So, me personally, I don't have any issue with it.
Well, I need to read the requirements for what's a minor modification 'cause I'm not sure that this...
That this falls within?
Yeah, I've gotta, I'm trying to find the bylaw.
I could be wrong on that, but I believe it's at the discretion of the planning board to make the...
Yeah, I'm just trying to read the wording. And I'm only saying that because I've just moved all these things around and I just...
And it's hard to find.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's why he's working so hard to make it easy.
May I ask a question?
Please identify yourself. Who is this?
Jane Gleason.
Didn't sound like you. You sound like you're far away, Jane.
I am far away. My question is about what changed with the dumpster? 'Cause it's clouded.
Actually, looking at the original approved plans and looking at these, I can't tell with the naked eye any change at all. It looks very, very close to where it was.
It slid to the east slightly. So, if you look at the old plan, the corner of the dumpster pad doesn't quite line up with the handicap ramp that we have going into the building. And now, the dumpster pad has slid a little bit to the east. And you can see that on the revised plan that we provided. The easterly portion of the dumpster pad is now more in line with the accessible ramp, whereas the June plan had it just outside that accessible ramp. So, it slid to the east a few feet.
Can you tell me why?
Yeah, the electric manhole got installed. And it was needed to slide that forward in order to, so that we didn't have the electric manhole in the dumpster pad, covered by a dumpster.
Yeah, my eye says that that might be the prob, might have the problem that Carl, I believe, was referring to, or maybe it was Mr. King was referring to about access to that dumpster. That the eastern end of that dumpster bay is a little bit tucked in. That might be difficult for the trucks to get at.
Yeah. Yeah, you definitely would...
It's oversized.
Yeah. No, you just, it's a cautionary note, you know?
Yeah.
The dumpsters have to be in the dumpster enclosure.
And we understand that?
Yeah, okay.
The dumpsters will come anywhere near filling that. I doubt it.
So, Mr. King, for clarification then, um, the determination of major in the current bylaw, it's 1566.9, which deals with revisions. And basically, the determination in the way the bylaw is currently written of whether it's major or minor is in the discretion of the zoning enforcement officer, um, which is one of the reasons I was, in my mind, that's gonna evolve, I think. But in any case, um, there's no, no criteria for a minor revision, however, um, and I think you're gonna be okay, I'm just gonna read it into the record.
Check.
A major revision, again, if the determination of the zoning enforcement officer is significant in terms of size or location of the building, I don't know if that's significant in terms of size of the building or not.
Relation to the building, I would say no.
Right, that's, that's, that's what we would make a determination on, or he should be making a determination on. Relocation of access and exit cuts, um, no, there's no change there.
No.
Uh, overall parking layout, no, no change.
No.
Um, landscaping and buffers, we talked about that, minor, minor change to landscaping, no change to buffers, right?
Right.
So I don't think, it's not major in that sense. And overall, in appearance of the building or intensity of use, um, that would be a major.
Which I, I don't think we've ticked any of those boxes.
Yeah, I think the board can decide, but that's, that's the criteria I think we're, we're looking at. Thank you.
Makes sense. I'd just like to note at this time, too, with the buffering on that side, Mr. Warren's very sensitive to what the people at British Landing expect. So if someone's not happy when we say it's done, we'll make it, we'll make it right.
Well, I think that goes back to something we always chat about with, with all people that come before us, we just want you to be a good neighbor.
Yeah, well, you know, if there's a complaint, we'll fix it.
Um, Mike, any comments? Questions, concerns, wants, needs, desires?
No. I think they should be a little bit more consistent. It seems like every time they come before us, there's another change. And as long as they understand the other two buildings haven't been approved.
Right.
Definitely won't put the microscope on.
Yep. Okay, Sherri?
We don't have any questions or comments.
Jane?
Um, other than the ones I had before, um...
Nothing else?
I do have a question, um, about the, the lot coverage. What, what does this do to that? And, and maybe it's a, maybe it's a premature question that needs to be asked when we come to the other buildings? I don't know.
Um, lot coverage is, building coverage allowed is, I don't know what I did with my glasses, but it, it looks like it's 30%. That's what the allowed lot coverage is.
Mm-hmm.
And currently, it's at 17.1, um, exclusive of the additional area that we, exclusive of the 38 by 12-foot addition. We did not, I did not adjust that table to increase that lot coverage.
Well, it certainly didn't increase it by...
Yeah, as I say, you're still well below the threshold.
13% or something, so...
Yeah, but it still needs to be done.
Right.
But, well, and it would need to be considered when you come before us with the other two buildings.
Yes.
Okay. I had, I had one question. I'm looking at the floor plan where, with the kitchen arranged orientation and then this new shed addition, how are they getting in it? I don't see a door.
Um, there's, I think it's just an omission on the, on the architectural plan, but if you look, um, just adjacent to the after closet, that wall isn't, is not drawn in fully. So I was thinking that that perhaps is the entrance into, into the storage area or kitchen area.
Obviously, it would be up to the billing inspector to cons, to make sure that it's appropriate width.
Right.
So along similar lines, I would ask, could you review with us the, how deliveries are made to the building?
The deliveries were to be made to the building across those crosshatched concrete areas. The delivery trucks were to be scheduled prior to, um, normal business hours at the restaurant and they would drop off supplies and what have you on those, on, in that concrete delivery area and they'd have to wheel it back with two-wheeled hand carts and up those stairs to get into the, to get into that kitchen area. So they're gonna have to access the, either the easterly stair or the westerly stair at grade and lump the stuff up the stairs, um, from the ground level. That's to get to the second, that's to get to the operating level. The lower level of that building is slab-on-grade, at grade, and I don't know if there's a door on the lower level, is there a door on the lower?
Plenty of them.
Yeah. But the food actually has to get up to the main level, correct?
Right. So it's a, it's a labor of love, I guess, is when we're looking at it, it's gonna be some hard work for some, some people to bring it up those stairs.
Yeah, 'cause that's, that's down to seven feet between the, the edge of the buffer and the fencing and the bottom of the stairs.
Right. It's gonna be even tight just getting a pallet down there, 'cause stuff tends to hang over the edges.
Right.
Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. Madden, could you point to the area where the trucks are gonna park for unloading and loading, just so I can see? On, on your diagram, just...
Yeah, on, this is the only one that I can point on it. It would be this, see this area that's shown as, the Batuminous Parking Area Drive Thru is shown as shaded and the concrete associated with the, the loading and deliveries is shown as, as concrete, like five-foot square slabs, just for clarity's sake.
Okay.
So that's where it would be, a truck would either have to, um, turn in to this entrance from Main Street and point down the driveway and unload off the rear, or if they're box trucks, they could, they could drive in from the northerly end, drive through, back up into, up to that area, but...
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. So, uh, thank you, one, one comment, uh, and this is just a comment to Mr. Madden's labor of love and lumping the stuff up to the stairs. We all know when there's a lot of hard work and manual, people have to do the work, they, they always look for workarounds and we'll just have to pay attention to what happens.
Yeah, and I can see where...
That's hard, that's gonna be hard, 'cause that's a quick turn and...
Yeah, and especially with the size of that restaurant, there's gonna be a fair amount of commodities going in and out of that, that end of the building. And who's, who's gonna watch or control the vendors?
That, that was sort of my point, these guys are gonna say, you want me to do what?
Well, it's not so much doing what, but the time of day, I mean, they're gonna be using that parking lot. I can see a Cisco truck, you know, with a, a 32 or a 40-foot trailer on it. And if he's there at 11:30, when the, when the noontime lunch guests are starting to arrive, that becomes an issue.
Yeah.
You know, before, we had a clear shot where they could back down that so-called alley and be out of the flow. You don't have that anymore. So that, that's gonna be, that, that, that would be a concern.
Is that, going back to the criteria, does that, that changes the flow? And that was one of the criteria for major, minor. Is that significant enough?
In, in my opinion, it definitely changes the flow as far as, as vendor traffic, not so much client traffic.
Client traffic. Is that significant enough to go further review? I mean, it's gonna be an issue for the, for the deliveries, I think.
I can see that transformer getting, is that transformer raised?
That transformer is not installed. I expect it to be a, a pad-mounted transformer.
Looks like you're creating, between that and the dumpster, you're creating a choke point in there.
Um, well, no, that, that electric manhole is, the electric manhole, it's closer to Main Street. That's, that's a manhole with a cover at grade and to the, to the east where the boxes with the T in it, that would be the transformer. There's a little bit of separation from that dumpster enclosure to that, that transformer body, but the manhole is, it's right at the edge of the concrete slab.
But the manhole's not the problem, is when you get the closest to the building, the corner of the dumpster, the transformer, the stairs, that's a choke point. I hope they got some good drivers.
Well, that's where the landscape buffer and the landscape berm is gonna be, so they're not really gonna be able to, um, drive back there at, at that location.
Uh, I have a message from, uh, Mr. Warren, who says they're gonna take deliveries to the basement of the stairs in the back. He can't get into the meeting for some reason. He would otherwise...
He's, he, yeah, he's, he's, he was sick today. Yeah, he was supposed to be here, but he's...
But I, I don't think, how the stuff actually enters the building is at question. It's the, the orientation of the trucks on the property while they're offloading.
Right.
You know, the, if you go down, you know, Main Street anywhere, there's always a Cisco truck parked at the edge of the curb, taking up three-quarters of the road, unloading. And they don't care. They just put that truck wherever they can find a few square feet and they unload and what happens around them is not their issue. So I would, like I said, I would just be concerned that if they're showing up there at, at 1 o'clock in the afternoon to do a, a delivery, that creates, that creates a potential safety issue.
I mean, if they want the business, they're gonna do what the operator says. Mark Anthony's has a Cisco truck in front of it, 8:30, three times a week, blocks off, unless it have. But they're there at 8:30. They're not there...
They're not there at lunchtime.
After that.
Yep.
'Cause they couldn't get there. But they, the operator says, you know, you have to be here, and they are. I drive by, go into the office, and they're there before, always before nine. And I'm sure Mr. Warren's gonna make sure. He, he needs, he needs the parking. He can't have a truck blocking that parking, parking lot.
No, that's...
So he's, you know, you want my business, gonna be there at blank o'clock.
Yeah, it doesn't hold too much water, Sam.
Hmm?
Cumberland Farms on West Wayham, there's coke trucks parked in the parking lot...
Yep.
On the side and everything else. That place is a nightmare.
Yep.
And they do the same thing, they park them there. You tell them, says, hey, I can't get my car in, tough. And they couldn't kill us.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I'd like to have Dan Warren raise his hand. Do you want to...
Sure. Dan, go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay, thanks. Sorry I couldn't be there tonight, but I'm pretty under the weather. Uh, we've had meetings with Budweiser and Cisco and the, uh, the trash people and everybody. The deliveries will all be made there in the mornings, not in the mid of the day. At the Bessie Park end of the building, there's a six-by-eight overhead there with a walkway that goes back and there'll be a set of stairs that goes up from there and there'll be a receiving area there. We've thought about all that stuff and how to keep the noise away from the British Landing side and, um, they all understand that's the way we're going to do it.
The, um, the, the, the original discussions on the project, Dan, didn't, uh, didn't entail have, make, getting product at the, at the Bessie side, park side of the building, though. I mean, that, there's no provisions in that lot whatsoever for delivery trucks, that's all customer parking.
Yeah, but when you, when you come up through the cross, I understand exactly what you're saying there. When you come up to go across the front of the building, that will, there's that lower, that lower deck area there, that's, that's where the landing area would be. I, I think that can definitely be controlled. I, I would never, I would never let them be trying to deliver there in the middle of the day. I, I would want them there in the mornings. And, and they've all said they will do that, like, they're over to the Narrows at about 9 o'clock every day and, and they make that work, but, um, I, I think we have that covered pretty much.
Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. Buckland, in the original approval, um, and I'm not sure, now I've gotta go find the other bylaws, can they change where they take deliveries?
Uh, if you specified where they're taking deliveries, unless it's a minor modification, they have to deliver in the way that they had proposed.
Right, which, which is at the...
Bessie Park side?
No, the opposite side. At the, at the British Landing end is where the proposed deliveries.
Because that's, originally, there was an alleyway there, which is now...
That's right, yeah.
That's where all the deliveries were gonna be.
And now the alleyway doesn't exist anymore.
I don't know if the restriction, if we put that condition on the original...
Oh, if they condition, I actually said that. I don't know, I'm gonna go up and see if I find it.
Right, that was just my question, but... Because the whole traffic flow and everything was conditioned on, everything, the dumpsters and everything being on this end of the, the way the flow was designed. I just don't have the original conditions in front of me.
And they're not on the website.
May I make a comment?
Absolutely.
It seems that with some reconfiguration of the additional space and that stair that accesses it on the west end of the proposed 12 by 38, that you could eliminate that pinch point and make enough space for a truck to pull in there. Seems that that could be a solution.
I was just thinking the same thing.
How, how would you reconfigure it?
That it's not 12 by 38 necessarily. Why does it have to be 12 by 38?
Well, I gotta guess that the, the restaurant equipment company said you need more space and they, they didn't pick 12 by 38 as an arbitrary number. I'm sure equipment kinda dictated that.
Yeah, I'm just guessing that that's a possibility. If you get rid of that pinch point and allow a truck to come up there, parallel to that fence, that you could, if you eliminate that pinch point and make space for a 40-foot trailer to come in there and park there if it needs to, and more likely a box truck during the day, if anything.
Stair, you're back at 10.3 feet.
Well, we'll make it narrower, then turn it back and come back this way and up.
I was saying, is there, is there anything on the floor plan that would, that would negate taking that and sliding it back toward the water?
Yeah, that's another possibility, it seems.
You know, if he needs that square footage, that's understandable, but if you could take that whole addition and just slide it backwards to the back corner of the building...
But then those stairs will extend into the, to the no, no activity zone.
Can't do it, 'cause you got a window on the first bay, first...
Stairs may extend into the no-activity zone.
From this side, the first post to get the Yggdrasil.
From conservation. Then they've gotta go back to conservation for an RDA.
Yeah, yeah.
Is Yggdrasil down here?
Why, yeah, but if they're gonna slide this back...
On that little deck.
Why can't they just take the stairs and just turn them 90 degrees?
Again, until we see the plan, but they can't, they can't go into the no-activity zone.
Yeah, no, no, I, I get that.
We can't design on the fly, so that's, we just need to rule on the plans in front of us.
I, I, I mean, I personally, now that this discussion has evolved a little further, I, I'd like to see some way to reestablish that delivery area. Because I, I'm sure, you know, we all, in our, in our best efforts, think that we can control people, vendors and whatnot, um, but that's just not reality. I mean, vendors are gonna do what vendors do, which is, hey, do you want this stuff so that you're gonna have dinner service tonight or don't you? That, that's the conversation that'll take place.
Okay, so I think I'm hearing what's... Okay, so, I think I'm hearing what's being said here. So if we should probably give another look, see, and talk to the building designer about revamping those stairs and really fine-tuning and tweaking that 38-foot by 12-foot space to what we can live with down there, I guess.
Right.
And do everything potentially possible to...
If the, I mean, like Kyle said, we can't redesign on the fly. But if you move that front, that front wall of that addition back 20 feet, whether it be giving up the space or moving the whole thing backwards, now you're creating, you're nestling the back end of a delivery truck into that alcove. Now, they have a defined delivery spot. Right now, they don't. They're just going to use the parking lot and unload wherever they can find a spot to put the truck. So I would think that that's, for myself, I think that's what I'd like to see come back with.
Can we approve the minor modification, modification to the other side of the building?
On the opposite side, on the staircase? Yeah, I mean, I definitely don't have any issue with that.
Excuse me, until they're done with the final configuration, what are we...
This, I don't think they're saying.
Well, I think honestly, whatever solution they come up with for this end of the building is going to change that.
Except if he designed this because he was anticipating taking deliveries on this end now?
Right, well, he won't be able to do that.
I, okay, you can make the motion.
Well, I'm not making the motion. Sam was making the motion. But I think I would have to agree with Sam. I don't think that that staircase is being moved out of the middle of the patio.
Well, it's all up to the...
I'm sure not for me, anyway.
Yeah, I don't see any...
I don't, I don't.
Hey, this is Danny again. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
We're not, we're not totally locked into 38-by-12. We need, we need above 32. The reason we was going for the extra was we wanted to put the big electric switching boxes out there and not have them against the back wall between the work area, the kitchen, and the dining room. So we might, I think if Bill and I put our heads together, we can figure this out. And, excuse me, and make it, I understand what everybody's saying, and I totally agree about those guys. They're going to want to, I'm owed to go. There's no getting around it. So, we just need to think about it and try to figure out a way to tighten it up a little bit. But the thing I wanted to say was, it was a great question, how do you get to the, how do you get to the area? The wall that's already there and erected now, we will cut a large window into that, and that'll be, if you would, where you would put the plates up and stuff for the girls and the loading areas right there. And the door would be right where it is right now, like Bill had said, but it will be wider. It'll be twice as wide as it is now, because we, we want to be able to have plenty of swing and move room in there ourselves, too, for working on equipment and fixing equipment and taking equipment in and out as time goes by.
Which door are you referring to, Dan?
On the, on the British Landing end of the building, the south end of the building, right on the 28-foot lean-to roof side, we have a doorway there now where the stairs are, actually, right now. They're temporary stairs, but that's where the door will get us into that other addition. Because everything that's got a gas hook up to it has to be under that new type of hood they've designed. And that's where we started getting into trouble. But we also, excuse me, we might be able to shorten it up a little bit by using electric steam tables. I just didn't get a chance to talk to the fire department about it, because I've really been sick.
Okay, all right, so I would say...
There's things to do.
We just, I think the staircase on the opposite end is pretty fine, or doesn't, I don't think it needs to be addressed tonight, though. I mean, we can approve them both. I don't think that's going to create... Dan, if we have tried to approve this or disapprove it, as it were, all in one shot, and we elected not to act on anything tonight until you came back with a revision, is that going to screw up anything as far as that small staircase being moved at the opposite end of the building? Or are you still okay with that?
No, excuse me, again. How soon could we get back in?
We've been keeping a pretty light agenda. I don't see why you can't come in for the next meeting.
Well, let's just give me and Bill another week to work on this thing.
Okay.
I said, a lot of good points came up, and then they all made sense to me. So, we'll, we'll come back to you guys. Is that okay with you, Bill?
That's fine.
Okay, good.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. So I would entertain a motion that we postpone acting on this to determine whether it's a minor or major modification until Bill and Danny return with a revised set of plans to address the addition end of the building and the access for deliveries until our next scheduling, our next regularly scheduled meeting, which I don't have my planner with me today, so that would be the 23rd, because that's still pretty light.
One thing I would like to get into the mix also is, the reason we put those doors at the other end, when you, when you're buying beer and stuff, it's not five or six, five or six cases, it's pallets. That's why I was looking at that, for the, you know, the keg taps and stuff that would be down, down that other end of the building to come in there. Because that would make a whole lot of handling getting it back to where it needs to be. I believe, I mean, I got a meeting with Al-Niif's people, hopefully next week they're coming out to go over stuff with us.
Well, maybe, maybe you can bring some, some of that meeting back with you so that we know what we're dealing with.
Yeah, exactly. I think that's what we all need to do, then.
All right, so, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherri Kurick, Paul and Jeva. Sherri?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Carl? Jane?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, we'll see you on the 23rd.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Hope you feel better.
I hope so, too.
What's that?
Per Mr. Buckland, our original conditions did not talk about where deliveries were being made. However, clearly, the whole design discussion was...
Right, absolutely. And it falls back to the safety, which is definitely within our prerogative to act on. Health, welfare, and safety. Okay. Wow, item number three, no new public hearings. How did that happen, Ken? Really?
It's been a long time.
It's been a long time.
It's been in accordance with zoning, I guess.
Item four, continued public hearings, 3321 Wayham PV1 LLC, zero route 25.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, welcome back.
Happy New Year. So, again, between last meeting...
If you could identify yourself.
What's that?
If you could identify yourself for the record.
Sure. John Clavens, Clavens Law Group, for Long Road Energy, the applicant.
Okay.
And with me, we have, yeah, Matt Thornton, Director of Development for Long Road Energy.
Attorney Robert Galvin, representing David Fletcher, the property owner.
Sarah Eba, VHB, the civil engineer for the project.
Awesome. We know all of you, but we have to have it for the record. All right.
No problem. So, between last meeting and tonight, we again tried to listen very closely to your remaining concerns and adjust them as best we could. Firstly and very simply, we submitted further revised site plans to incorporate the last final touches that Mr. Rowley had requested, showing the planned location of the new utility poles. They'd been shown before, but shown with more clarity now, and with the easement area, easement lines even more clearly shown. A cross-section to show the location of the new utilities under the access road, and some detail on the specifications for the reconstructed access road. So we're hopeful that that puts those issues to bed. The more significant issue we addressed in the meantime was your concerns about decommissioning cost estimate and financial assurance. And the NREL report that was brought up last time was new to us at the time, so we took a close look at it, had our expert, Stan Tech, take a look at it with us. And we've tried to create a couple of different paths, each of which we think would, would work. And we ask, we have a favored path, but we think both paths could work, and we'll defer to your judgment as to what initial path makes sense. So I guess first and foremost, the bylaw calls for a decommissioning cost estimate prepared by a qualified engineer. Stan Tech is our qualified engineer and has prepared and refined and further refined its cost estimate here. Stan Tech has done this in over 25 states, has done hundreds of estimates accepted by as many regulatory bodies across the country. We couldn't identify that the NREL report was prepared by qualified engineers, that those particular cost estimates were prepared by qualified engineers. The bylaw also contemplates a cost estimate for a particular project. And obviously, the NREL report wasn't prepared for this particular project. Those figures could still be instructive. But as you'll hear shortly, we had grave reservations about whether those figures were even remotely appropriately transported to this project. The end result is that our strong hope is that the board will consider that we've complied with our responsibilities to provide a good estimate by a qualified engineer, and will use those figures now at a pretty significant cost amount. So we have a cost estimate of nearly $645,000, grossed up by 125% for a financial assurance amount of $806,000 and change. We hope that that will be the good initial figure, but that, as we suggested last time, instead of waiting five years for a first update, do a first update very close in time, so between now and commencement of construction, so that we're able together to achieve a number of goals. One, a cost estimate that for sure will reflect the final design of the project. Two, time and space for the town to hire a peer reviewer. We've proposed, and some proposed permit conditions on this, that the applicant defray the costs of that to truly facilitate it. Now, if the board can't get comfortable with that, we're not standing on our high horse. If we, if you feel that it is critical, under the bylaw, to use figures derived from that NREL report, the revised decommissioning plan cost estimate table has numbers that we think are really quite high, way higher than needed, but Long Road has committed to use those as initial figures. If those are used, we feel even more strongly that a, an early update between now and commencement of construction would really be critical. So, I think Joanne Blank is on standby. Yeah. She can explain more why the NREL figures really shouldn't be counted as an estimate of a qualified engineer under the bylaw. So if Joanne is there...
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can everybody hear me?
We can, if you could...
Thank you. Yeah, so Joanne Blank from Stan Tech here. And so, so what I did is I reviewed, my team and I reviewed the NREL report, and have some, you know, definite concerns about the, about the numbers that are, and I apologize, I just have to, I have to pull it up here, I've been multitasking. Definitely have some concerns about the numbers, and as Jonathan pointed out, the numbers that are in that NREL report are not really based on any specific project. They're just general one-megawatt estimates. And so several of the, several of the numbers that are very concerning are the number where they have $75,000 to remove a transformer. Well, that may be a very legitimate number for a transformer that is in a substation, but transformers for, for solar PV are, can be lifted very easily by a forklift and, and moved off, you know, onto a flatbed truck. So, $75,000, and especially per megawatt, because a transformer would, would be handling more than one megawatt in itself. So, you know, even if it took $75,000 to do it, that would account for several, several megawatts of power. So, so it's just numbers like that, and, and one can see just by the general numbers that, you know, they aren't based on any specific project, they're just rounded to the 5,000. You know, as, you know, as a company that, that we do very detailed estimates on all of our, on all of our decommissioning plans and how many hours and minutes it takes and what type of equipment, you know, we believe in, yes, we'll round them to the nearest dollar or $10 or $50, but the fact that, you know, what we have here is, well, here we go, it's 2,000, 5,000, $25,000, you know, that's what's in their estimate. So, you know, there's just, there's just nothing that we can, we can see from here that, you know, that we can compare and, and, you know, and say, oh, yeah, that, that matches up with what it would take to take that particular piece of equipment off of the, off of the field and, and take it to recycling. You know, just a couple of other things, kind of the same, same complaint, I guess, about the, about the inverter, you know, $50,000 for, for an inverter. for, for an inverter. And, you know, just in general, things like removing and palletizing the PV modules, you know, $25,000. Well, how many modules are we talking about? Are we talking about modules for one megawatt at 300 watt per panel, or at the newer ones, which are 600 watts per panel? So, you know, just in general, that's where, you know, we have a hard time accepting the numbers in the NREL report versus the very specific numbers that we've used, and based on, on our knowledge and the knowledge of, of contractors that, that do this type of work.
Thanks, Joanne.
Okay, thank you very much. Just one quick comment to Jones, if I may. The, the numbers, you know, in her estimation, and I'm sure she's very qualified, may be high, and in her words, somewhat unrealistic. Nobody knows what's going on 20 years from now, 25 years from now. You know, you can say what you want about what's happening in the here and now, but the future, nobody has control over. And at the end of the day, it's our, it's our town. People live here. So, you know, if we err on the side of caution to ensure that if something needs to be taken care of, it is taken care of, then, you know, that's, that's the way it is. The number really doesn't have anything to do with it. It's making sure that when we make a decision, it's fair to the landowner, fair to the developer, but it also protects the town. And we've learned so much over the past two or three years concerning solar, and what we were approving two years ago, you know, I'd like to hide from what I said yes to, to be quite honest. So...
What did those guys 20 years ago do?
Right, right, exactly. And so, but anyway.
That's certainly understood, and, and I certainly don't mean to be saying that 25 years from now, that, you know, that the price that we're giving is going to be what it takes to take out that, that product. And that is why you have those safety measures in place, that it is updated every, every five years, and that would account for, you know, your, your inflation and, and changes in technology, for the good or the bad, and changes in labor and market. I think we all wish we had a crystal ball, that, that we could know what something is going to be 25 years from now. So, I certainly appreciate your, your position there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So, in terms of updating, we've proposed some procedural safeguards, so that the applicant would defray a portion of the cost of having the town engage a peer reviewer for the periodic updates. And then, because the chair expressed some concern about, even if there's a peer reviewer, if there's some difference of opinion, how does it get resolved? We've also proposed a dispute resolution process, where if there are dispute, then there would be an independent qualified licensed professional engineer mutually agreed upon by the town and the applicant. And the ultimate decision would be made by that third-party neutral. So, a multi-step process. And that process would be available to be used at each and every update. Also addressing your concern, the revised decommissioning plan bumps up the presumed inflation rate to 3% annually between updates. And then, again, for the form of decommissioning financial assurance, we simply asked the board to follow the same process that is used before, and that's one of the conditions of the permit. For the convenience of the board, to the extent that it's helpful, you know, but with all deference, we appended to our letter some suggested draft conditions on this, just to help facilitate the process and show how it could be implemented in very clear and objective condition language. And in our language, we included alternative language if you chose the higher initial financial assurance amounts. Beyond that, we understand that Mr. Cosgrove submitted additional materials recently. We have been through them. Our basic understanding is that it's really all the same issues that have been brought up before. We believe we've addressed those. I'll go through a few. There's some discussion in his letter about the structure of the bylaw, and the planning board's authority. We believe there's no question the planning board is the correct body to address this permit application. In terms of the groundwater issues, we thought that at last public hearing session with Charles Rowley's help, the groundwater issues were put to bed pretty clearly. The letter talks about the groundwater protection overlay district. This project is not in that overlay district. The letter refers to section of Article 15 relating to performance guarantees. There's obviously an overlap between those provisions and the provisions relating to decommissioning assurance, but those particular sections are about guaranteed construction of improvements. So, that's important to remember. In terms of aesthetic impacts, I believe we talked about those pretty clearly last time, and what was visible from where, what buffer and screening has been designed. The environmental issues relating to cadmium telluride, we discussed at very great length before. I, I don't believe we need to discuss those again. In terms of the issue relating to the access road, or the access easement across town-owned property, there's some confusion in the letter here that may be helpful to address. The letter refers to a Massachusetts Supreme Digital Court case, and suggests somehow that that case means this board has to pin down this property rights issue before issuing a decision. That's not the case. I took a look at that case today. It's a very short case from the early 1960s, the Kennedy administration era. It does make the point that a zoning board can't delegate certain decisions that it really needs to make in order to make the decision it's making. It doesn't say that permit conditions can't be crafted to address certain items. I'll give one example in a moment. There's some suggestion that that case stood for the proposition that a zoning board's authority included the authority to determine that the property owner or project proponent had adequate water supply. I couldn't determine that from that case. It was not what the court was talking about. The court was really talking about board decisions that really kicked the can down the road, where the can is what the board is supposed to be deciding to make its court decision. We're not proposing that happy, that is the case here. As I've explained before, the, the property rights issues between David Fletcher and the applicant and the town are issues between property owners. It's not a matter of zoning. And I think we had a discussion, including Mr. Buckland, last time, and pinned that down. One good example of a condition where things can be worked out later is the decommissioning issue. So, in making its decision, the board is going to have looked at very robust evidence regarding decommissioning cost estimates. The bylaw requires a decommissioning cost estimate prepared by a qualified engineer. We submitted that. You'll make your initial decision, but then there'll be a condition that this gets looked at time and again over the course of the project. That's fine. That's not an impermissible delegation. One thing I recall court saying is that boards can create conditions for things to be done later, as long as there are clear and objective standards for doing that. And here, the standard is, you know, it's got to be an accurate cost estimate. So, I don't think anything else requires addressing, except Mr. Galvin, they want to talk about the repeated reference to Mr. Fletcher and the use of his property.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Okay, there we go. I did address the issues that were raised regarding earth removal at the last meeting. There was a period of time when Mr. Fletcher owned the property that he was exempt in the process of constructing additional bog. There was a time when it made no longer sense to continue constructing bog, and as a result, he entered into a settlement agreement in 2018, which you have a copy of, for some earth removal fees that were due to the town and that resolved the issue. There's been an allegation that earth removal activities have continued on that property, and it's not true. There has been some re-grading of the site, but no earth removal has been ongoing at the property since that time. So, I think from that perspective, there are no outstanding issues. And to our knowledge, there are no pending issues with the Conservation Commission, although I keep on seeing reference to something that's going to be inquired about, not to our knowledge. If there are, we'll certainly address it. Again, but it's not to our knowledge.
And even if it were, as we pointed out in a prior letter, courts have made clear that zoning decisions don't turn on the identity of the landowner or the landowner's activities. Is there anything else that has been submitted by us or others that we can address as a team for you?
Well, I just have one quick question. It's, you referenced that you forwarded a, a list of proposed conditions.
Yes.
I haven't seen it.
It was the very last page of my December 30th letter, which is uploaded to the project website.
12:30.
So, if you have...
Yep, all right, I found it. All right, thank you.
What was the date, 12:30?
12:30.
Yeah, I have.
All right, so, a couple of quick questions, you know, reading through the decommissioning and all. The panels could be sold on the secondary market and/or recycled. Have, has a recycler been identified, or a recycling center? Where is it that they're being trucked to? Is it outside of Wareham? And the reason I ask the question is because on the first round, there was reference that the recycling was going to happen at the Wareham Recycling Center. And I spoke to the folks at the Wareham Recycling Center personally this past week, and I damn near gave the lady a heart attack when I told her the number of panels that would be coming to that facility. And she very quickly said, who knew? Not in a million years.
That, that may have been Borrego.
Yeah, I think it was.
Yes, it was, yes.
I just wanted to make sure, because that it wasn't going there. Your plans are, if you sell them, or if you recycle them, they're going out of town?
Yes. That is what the plan is based on.
I heard that, okay. That was, so that was a big one for me. Conditions I found in, in Mr. Mr. Cosgrove's letter, he did, as you alluded, he did touch on a bunch of subjects. There was one subject, there really seems to be, for me anyway, there seems to be two buckets of concern. One is the decommissioning, which, to your credit, I think you've done a yeoman's job of addressing. You've definitely made some huge strides in making me feel better. I don't know about the rest of the board, but I feel better about it. The other, the other bucket of concern is groundwater. And Mr. Cosgrove touches on that repeatedly. And there's reference to monitoring wells. Is there a, you know, reason why we couldn't have a monitoring well or two between the property and the anticipated flow of groundwater from the property to the aquifer, so that we would have that secondary level of comfort that somebody's watching it, and if, for whatever reason, even the tiniest bit of change started to occur, that we would know about it, and not, you know, five years later, when it's too late to do something about it, or damage has already been done?
Yeah, our first response would be that that would be unprecedented and unnecessary, given the components of the project and the environmental profile.
It's really not unprecedented, per se, because this subject's been broached with the Ferring Hill project, so that it's not unprecedented.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's a...
Do you want to say anything about that?
I guess I'm, so on the Ferring Hill project, was there groundwater monitoring that was instituted, I think?
Well, the project hasn't been acted on yet, but the, the discussions and the assertions from the town were that we would have three monitoring wells that would be monitored for the life of the project.
And?
Looking for the same things that Mr. Cosgrove and, and the group of people that he is working with are concerned about, which is toxins leaching into the ground, getting into the groundwater.
From, from the panels, so like the cadmium telluride specifically?
And, and flow rates.
And flow, right, and changes in flow.
Yeah. I mean, I think from a practical perspective, you know, to the extent you can classify cadmium telluride as, as toxic, it's, you know, extremely low.
Well, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, but I beg to differ, only because, well, this isn't really indicative, but I drink the water every day.
Right.
You know, and I watch my wife drink two to three glasses of the water every day. So, your opinion of what's really not toxic, in my opinion of what's really not toxic, differ. And, and, you know, the reality of it is, is we're working not on top of, but very close to the aquifer.
And three working town wells you can walk to from that site.
Right. Yeah, and, yeah, okay. Mehdi is on the line, yeah. So, I think our groundwater expert Mehdi, who spoke last time, can address this with more detail.
Well, yeah, he's certainly welcome to address. I just, I would, as I tell the public, when they come to speak, bring something new and fresh. Don't, don't go over the same thing that we've heard, which is his assertion that the groundwater is not going to change and whatnot. We've heard all that. So, if he has some information concerning the upside or the downside of a monitoring to, to give the residents some peace of mind, then by all means, let's have him weigh in.
Or, or we could just condition it and move on.
Or we could just condition it and move on, right.
We understand what your expert said, but you go to the site, and there are three town wells within walking distance. And this project is over 20 years. And I've said it many times... And I've said it many times, what if something changed in 10 years? Why those guys back there 10 years ago do something? In 15 years, what if something changes? Another building? The power company decides to put their lines underground, the power line that runs within walking distance of the project? These are things that we're concerned with down the line, not necessarily what your expert says is happening right now, but what happens if things change? And again, 10 years from now, those people go, what are they thinking of? Things change. In 20 years, 20 years ago, Wareham was nothing like it is today. And in 20 years, it's going to be different, and things change. I mean, and you have major projects like the power lines right there. They may change, and that's between the town wells and your project. I mean, literally, a 15-minute walk from the project across the bogs, up the power line, you're at the main power line of the area.
Yeah.
And at the end of the day, we're talking about the town drinking water.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, this is, you know, an extremely, would be an extremely big liability for our project and the solar industry, right? That's, you know, this is sort of class action style lawsuit, so this is not anything we take lightly or anything we would plan to move forward with if the risk of a class action lawsuit existed.
True. I understand that, but again, Sam's talking about what happens 20 years from now.
Right.
So today, here and today, we get it wrong.
Right.
I mean, we're all human, and we're dealing with the technology that's available to us right now. And we say, okay, there's, you know, there's no chance of the telluride being a problem, and the solar panels aren't going to leach into the ground, and everything's hunky-dory. And we don't insist on the monitoring wells. And then 15 years from now, I got to look some woman in the eye whose kid's got cancer because of what we didn't anticipate.
Yeah.
And all because we didn't want to go through the expense of a monitoring well.
Right.
That would give us the heads up that said, hey, something's going on. We need to look at this, and we need to look at it now because it still might be a case of we screwed up and we did do something wrong, but at least we had the heads up from the wells that said, all right, we've got an issue. We need to shut down well number X, Y, and Z and stop supplying the town with water until we can figure out what's happening.
And also for your protection, you have four solar projects there now. You have the one that's far in Shurcran, the one they just put in, one on the other side of the power lines, and then half mile down, another one. It could be that you protect yourself against something happening from one of those guys that are already there, been there for years.
Yeah.
What if something happens at Shurcran, which is right over there? I mean, literally, I could throw a rock. So what if they did it wrong or what if Shurcran did it wrong up by the pond?
Right.
Yeah, you'd be guilty by association at that point.
Yeah.
It's not us. It's not us. You have a well to prove it.
Yeah. So I think, you know, we'd be more than happy to discuss a plan with you in monitoring this. I think as long as we're able to establish sort of pre-construction, you know, pre-impact levels and then, you know, have specific requirements.
Establish the baseline.
Establish the baseline and then look for specific, you know, contaminants or things in the water.
We know what we're working with.
Right. A baseline.
Right.
Right. But I think, so yeah, I think we'd be happy to discuss a plan to monitoring that and protect the town from that. I mean, it's, it is, it's bigger than the town if this becomes an issue.
It could be protection for you as well.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
There are four of them.
Right.
And we're also aware of the fact that you guys are structured as LLCs.
Mm-hmm.
And so the ability of anybody to reach you for a recovery, class action or otherwise, is limited to none.
I got to say one thing. You guys have done the best job of anybody so far, and you really have. And I'm familiar with the site, and I, all things being said, all protections in place, I think it's the good place for it, being cleared, being out of sight, being flat already. All those things are great for this site. It's, I would like it for every site that we're talking about, and you guys have done a good job, and I can't say you haven't.
Yeah.
And I don't want to imply by anything I say that you guys have done a great job. I think the wells will protect us and you for future action, potential future action.
Yeah. No, it's definitely something we should spend some time, you know, maybe that's a condition, is a plan, a monitoring plan approved by...
We're on single aquifer for all of our drinking water.
Yeah.
And that's what I hear over and over and over again. What about drinking water? Solar source, aquifer, that's all.
Right.
If something happens there, the whole town is screwed. And the people on wells still use that same water. So it's not, it's everybody.
Yeah. It is an extremely, you know, high risk for us, and, you know, various attorneys in our industry will say that despite the LLC structure, when it comes to the environmental stuff, the parent companies are often assumed, you know, to be liable for their smaller entities when it comes to environmental stuff. So we're very sort of protective and concerned about those issues because it does sort of, you know, could bankrupt our entire company, not just the LC, LLC. So it is something we're extremely sensitive to and can, you know, make that a condition or create a plan for that.
Okay. And then looking at your, that last page that you referred to with the proposed conditions...
There wasn't proposed conditions for all conditions. It was just the decommissioning.
Decommissioning.
Yeah.
Right. But this ties into that, I think, a little bit because it triggered a thought on that one there. You said the facility owner will pay up to $2,000 for the fees of a qualified licensed professional engineer. I think the same kind of agreement would apply if we go forward with wells, that the costs be borne, monitoring and whatnot, be borne by the proponent, not the town.
Yes. Agreed. Agreed.
That's good.
Anything else?
Several questions.
Lay it on me.
Thank you. These are educational primarily. I'm not imposing new conditions on you or trying to understand. And I'm glad that both attorneys are here because some of these sort of educate me on how things work in the event of bad news. So we're very focused on the decommissioning plan and protecting the town. My thought, though, and Sherry and I have discussed this, the town is not the first recourse or the property owner. If you walk away, the property owner, Mr. Fletcher, will own the liability for cleaning up your mess. Is that correct?
Well, contractually, that'll be addressed. So contractually, we'll address that with...
Well, that's going to be my next question. Have you?
I don't know specifically, but the answer is it will be addressed.
So is my understanding correct, whether you address it contractually or not? If Longwood walks away, the town is going to go after the property owner to clean up the mess because you are now in violation of the order of... It goes with the land. It doesn't go with Longwood. The conditions go with the land.
That's correct.
So that's why I'm asking sort of the lawyers. Longwood goes away, goes pop. They just, or at the end, they just walk away. Mr. Fletcher cannot walk away and leave all this stuff just sitting there. So that's my opinion, or my, I'm questioning that. Is that understanding sort of correct?
Yes.
I agree.
So Longwood walks away, the town is dissatisfied, we're going to go to Mr. Fletcher to resolve the issue. That seems to make sense, right?
I guess in the first instance, you'd go right to the decommissioning bond because that would be easy access to money.
Oh, okay. Yeah, but suppose...
But in the event that you didn't have enough or something else, you're right, you're probably going to bring a claim against everyone, including my client.
Right. Mr. Fletcher is, and just from a reality, if he leaves it alone, he's lost all the value of his land. He can't leave it a mess. Is that sort of also a reasonable understanding?
I don't think we would leave it with useless improvements for very long.
Okay. All right. So again, we're focused on protecting the town, but the town, there's a buffer between us and disaster or financial disaster. And Mr. Fletcher is going to, and that was going to be my next question.
Can I just...
Oh, sure.
Oh, and you said we're going to deal with this contractually.
Right.
You're not going to contract away to the developer your responsibility for the land, are you?
No. They'd be responsible to restore the property. Absolutely. Contractually, at the end of the long-term lease.
To the town.
To the land owner.
Original land.
To the land owner as well.
So they will be responsible to you.
Correct.
And you will be responsible to us, but your advice is our best first shot is at the bond, right?
Because you'll essentially write a letter to a bonding company saying they're in breach. The bonding company will determine yes or no, and if they agree with you, they'll send the money over and allow that to be available to restore the property.
How, may I ask a question?
Of course.
How, I'm not 100% familiar with bonds and how they work. How are the premiums paid? Is it a one-time upfront you pay for it or is it...
You can do it a variety of ways, and you have choices. Okay, you can obviously prepay a bond at a discount, giving somebody value that gets invested and then repaid, or you can pay on an annual basis or any varieties in between. So I'm a town council. I represent seven communities.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I've brought these bond claims before, not yet on a solar facility, but on a windmill facility that's been abandoned. I've brought them on subdivision bonds, something that you're a little bit more familiar with. And we literally file a demand letter under the bonding agreement that we get a copy of. You'll have a copy of it here. And the bonding company assigns someone to look into whether there's been a breach, and if they agree there's been a breach, they're obligated to pay over to the town the entire sum of that bond in order to remedy the issue.
What happens if you don't do it?
And in a lot of cases, in the first instance, they'll hire someone to go and do it.
And fix it.
Because it's cheaper for them to hire somebody. So, for example, I dealt with a water tower case in the town of Pembroke at one point, and the company failed and neglected to maintain the water tower. We had a bond. We brought a claim on the bond. They hired somebody to come in and remove the water tank, and the water tank, as many are years ago, painted with lead paint. Tremendously problematic, tremendously expensive to deal with, and that's what happened. They hire a company that's qualified to come in and remove it. You know, functionally, that's what's going on over in Plymouth at the nuclear power plant. Whole tech decommissioning company has been hired and now owns the facility and is being funded with contingency funds paid by Boston Edison to remove the nuclear facility other than what's being, I guess, apparently stored on the property. So that's what happens. They hire a company to come in and do it.
What, my, I guess the question I was leading up to is if you opt for a yearly payment on the bond or whatever it is, and the payment doesn't get made, the bond, what happens to the bond?
Well, first of all, when the bonds are written, you'll send it over to Mr. Bowen, and Mr. Bowen will review it, and my guess is he'll likely say that the town wants notice in the event that there's non-payment so we can claim a default before the expiration of the bond. That's how the town protects itself against the possibility of losing a bond.
Of the bond money's not being available.
And then you'd make a claim before the bond goes away.
Before, okay. So there's going to be, obviously, there's going to be some sort of a tick system in place that says, okay, every, at the end, 30 days before the anniversary date of the bond, that someone confirms that the bond payment is good standing.
You're probably going to be obligated to be notified at least 30 days in advance of any non-payment of any bond premium so the event you could make a claim on the bond.
All right. That was just...
No, those are great questions.
So if I could just finish this up. By having a bond as opposed to looking to the landowner in the first instance, though there's a pot of money, and we don't know and might not have a way of knowing what condition Mr. Fletcher might be in or a subsequent owner might be in. And so the bond really is the easiest way for us to know that there will be money there when and if it's needed.
Right. I mean, when any major infrastructure project is done in the town of Wareham, the town of Wareham gets a performance and a payment bond to make sure that the people that worked on the job get paid, that the materials are paid for, and the project is completed. State law requires that.
We have a problem where that's not the case, I think, so you may have heard it earlier.
I didn't, but in any of it, that's what the law envisions, performance and payment bonds. In this case, you're not worried about performance because they're going to construct it, and they're going to construct it to, you know, some exacting specifications and that you've been told about already, but in the event that they don't, you know, do not remove it at the end, then you have this money available to you.
Right.
Obviously, we'll contractually deal with that in the lease.
Great. So our first recourse is to the surety. We've agreed that if that collapses, Mr. Fletcher will have some liability, the landowner will have liability to make the property or the land conform. So that's my, that was my first question. Back to you. Having heard all of our discussions with decommissioning surety, how, and this is educational, it's not, I'm not looking for you to disclose too much, but how is Mr. Fletcher going to protect himself, given all the discussion you've heard? Is he going to take a similar approach that we're taking, or do you have another idea?
I didn't, I'm not personally familiar with the terms of the lease, but it'll be done via release. And the lease will have, you know, a longevity of the expected lifetime with options, my guess, because if this is a successful site and they're generating power, they...
You want to renew it?
And extend...
Yeah, we're all talking about the worst-case bad news scenario. All right. So...
We'll be doing it via release, though, to answer your question.
And what does that mean, via release?
A lease.
Oh, a lease, a lease. But you're, they're going to have to put up some kind of surety, right, to protect you? Or is there other...
I'm sure that there'll be some type of security deposit or something like that. I don't, I can't tell you that it's going to be the same amount.
No, no, I'm not asking, I'm looking for how would it be done? How do you envision it might be done?
We literally have a provision of the lease that requires the solar operator here or their successor in a sense because these things also...
Right, yeah. We would have the same kind of language.
They would be obligated to continue to maintain your surety, and they would be obligated to remove the facility within 30 days of its either non-use or abandonment or whatever.
Okay.
And, you know, we would have some type of security deposit and things like that.
I'm not trying to pin you down, I'm just trying to understand. Bad news, how it's going to work. We'll go after the surety bond, then we'll start dealing with Mr. Fletcher if his land is, or the owner is in non-conformity.
I'm sure Mr. Fletcher would hope that he's still around when this is all done.
Yeah. Okay.
And just to respond, we've had discussions with my client about how they anticipated this being handled, and it's what they anticipate and what they've done for project after project after project with landowner after landowner after landowner is very much in the mold of what Mr. Galvin just described.
Okay, great.
And, you know, the town has solar facilities on some of its municipal buildings already, and they did the same thing.
Right. Okay. No, I'm just, I'm trying to think through the worst case, okay? We go after surety bond, it's not enough, Mr. Fletcher can't, the landowner, I shouldn't say Mr. Fletcher, the landowner can't ignore the fact that he's got a non-conforming use now. That'll have to be dealt with. Okay, so before, there's lots that's going to happen in a bad case, so it's not just... The town is not the first, Mr., the landowner has as big a risk as the town does.
In, I'm not suggesting there's any adverse positions here, but in the event that that happens and they refuse, then there'd be adverse positions between my client and the operator here, and then we would also be looking to them, so like you.
Right. Okay, so I'm just trying to envision what's going to, what might happen, and I'm not saying, I'm not hoping. Okay. Next question, and given that I understand, and this is probably for a long road, this is a business, and you guys want to make money, and I don't know anything about the financial structure of this job, and I don't care. My question is more, and maybe this is really a question for how sureties work.
My question is more, and maybe this is really a question for how sureties work. What is the incremental cost in order of magnitude, not in dollars per se, of, and I'll look at the two numbers in Stan Tech's plan, $700,000 surety bond versus a $2.2 million surety bond. It's not, how significant is that cost? It's not that significant.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not a significant annual cost, but multiplied over 30 years, it becomes a pretty big piece, and I think the way that you're, we're, you know, we wanna base the estimates in sort of reality, make a best guess, we wanna revise it, we wanna be as efficient with our costs as we
No, I understand, you're trying to make money. I'm just saying, what's the order of magnitude indifference to your financial plan? Can you, is it major, you're saying it's significant. The cost of the surety bond over the life, that's a significant cost to your financial plan.
Over the 30 years of the project, yes.
It's material to your business plan. It's a material cost.
It's painful.
Didn't ask you that, didn't ask you that.
Does it represent 1% of anticipated gross, a 10th of a percent?
We're just trying to figure it out.
Yeah, without giving too much away, I think it'd be
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not entitled to
It's toward 1% and 2%, I mean, is what I would say.
Well, that seems not that bad.
Well, yeah, especially, I mean
They range, they can be as low as 5% of the cost of the bond, but also could be 15%.
The cost of the bond.
Yeah.
But not in relation to anticipated gross income.
Annual, okay, right. All right, so it's, okay.
Yeah, I think, I mean, with all aspects of the project, we wanna be efficient.
It also depends on what your credit score is and Oh, yeah, all that other stuff, yeah, how creditworthy you are.
Right, it's like a loan.
So, I mean, at 2%? Or 5%?
Okay, so you answered my questions regarding how the decommissioning surety will work, and the parties that are gonna be involved in the event of a bad outcome. My last question sort of goes back to the point that Attorney Clavins was making regarding the agreement with you and the town about the easement, and I understand that the position is that's outside the scope of our authority, and that, in one sense, makes sense to me. Just a straightforward question, maybe this is for a long road. If you don't get that easement, you're not gonna build the project, are you?
Well, first of all, we believe, based on our own internal analysis and engaging Dick Golda, title conveyancing expert that the town has relied on itself in the past, we don't believe any additional permission is needed. There is an easement, it's existed since 1966.
I'm moving beyond that.
Yeah.
To sort of move it off my concern. If you, if we permit this project, and you don't get the easement, whether I conditioned it, whether we conditioned it or not, you can't build the project. If we didn't have an easement, we couldn't build the project. That's what I'm sort of getting.
Yeah, it's, you know, from Longwood's perspective, we would like to enter into an easement with the town.
No, no, I'm trying to take it out of my concern.
Yeah.
I don't have to worry about that, because you, I'm sort of asking you, you can't build the project if you don't get that access.
No, no, there already is an easement.
I'm moving
There's a difference of opinion, but there already is an easement.
Right, that's what I'm trying to move.
I think that's what he's trying to say, is at the end of the day, if the town and you can't come to an agreement, and the town says, we don't, we don't recognize the easement, you can't use that road to bring your line through, then the project is, doesn't, doesn't work for you.
No, that's not the case at all.
That's what he just said.
We would have to come in another way.
Right, there's a huge power line on the other side of the property.
No, but then that would be a change to the site plan, and we'd have to go and review that again. Yeah, we'd just move the line. Yeah, but that's a change to the site plan, maybe minor, but I looked at the easement, too. I'm trying to get beyond the dispute between party A and party B, that you have the easement, you don't have the easement, you have to have the easement. Regardless, it wouldn't affect anything that you have to decide to That's what I'm trying to get
I like the sound of that.
And I guess the other regardless is, Longwood has already committed to reaching out to the town, and immediately after the last board meeting, reached out to the town administrator to start a conversation about this.
All right, I'm taking this as input to my decision-making process, but you can't build the project without an easement. You'd need an easement, we think we have it. That's not the question I was asking. You can't build the project if you can't get to the power line.
Correct.
There were alternate ways, we would have to come back. Right, I'm not trying to No, you're being precise, so that's okay. Okay. I think I've got my questions answered. I wasn't trying to be argumentative. No, you were being precise, it's fine.
Mr. Baptiste?
One sec.
One sec. Mr. Sherry?
You know, I appreciate the flexibility that you all are showing. It, you know, it seems to me that you've, you are coming a ways in an effort to have us look favorably on this. And I think what you can discern from what you're hearing from the board is that a larger decommissioning amount is really, I think, quite necessary to the board, and it just provides peace of mind. And what I wanted to get into a little bit was the mechanism that you proposed for making changes to the decommissioning fund. And I wanted to ask, first of all, when do you expect construction to begin?
Yeah, that's gonna be based on sort of the interconnection study process, and that, you know, it may not be for a couple of years, potentially. But it could go quickly as well, so.
As I understand, a few days ago, or very recently, the hearing began on the Plymouth Study Group. You're gonna have to go through that hearing, and then do a cost allocation process, and at that point, it'll be presented with an interconnection agreement. And you can't begin construction until after that?
Correct.
Okay. And that's, I think earlier you may have said that construction might begin very quickly after the beginning of this year. It may be that some expectations haven't been fulfilled, but still have a concern if there's a process in place that has this board looking again at decommissioning and the amount of the bond that is necessary to secure it relatively quickly. That's a concern to me. I think the board is trying to get itself out of the process of being, looking at solar projects all the time. It seems like that is what our lives have become, and a process that has us basically going into dispute resolution relatively quickly, at least to me, having been through a number of dispute resolution proceedings myself, at least in my former career, is not necessarily an easy process, or a quick one. And so doing it so quickly at least gives me some heartburn. Second thing that gives me heartburn is a process where we hire an expert, and you defray the cost by a couple of thousand dollars. Could be the cost is more than that. You have your expert, and if they don't agree, we go out and hire a third expert, and it looks to me like this board is bound by the third expert's opinion. I'm just not sure, as a matter of municipal law, an area which I am not expert in, whether this board can agree to have its decisions bound by an expert that is external to them. That gives me concern.
I agree, Sherry.
So, I could see a process that was instead, we have an expert, you have an expert, and this board decides, you know, based on input from the experts, what the right answer might be. That, to me, would be a more palatable approach to this.
We're open to that, we were just trying to respond to the chair's concern about what happens with a difference of opinion, and so we propose an extra step in the process that might help. If you don't view that extra step as helpful?
Yeah, I mean, and I'm just, I'm just letting you know what my concerns are. There may be better solutions out there than what I've recommended, but to me, it doesn't seem right that this board is bound by someone external to the board. I guess the, the other thing I would say is, I don't know if we have addressed the issue of fire safety for battery storage. I know for the Fairing Hill project, we have a series of conditions that are related to battery storage, and we would wanna make sure that we're including those in this project as well. It would be unfair to take one applicant through a number of hoops and not be even-handed in what we're doing. And
Can we shut down whatever that is?
Can you mute them all? Jane was having a party.
And just for the sake of clarity, I wanna make sure that you all are aware that we've sought the opinion of town council on the question of whether site plan review or special permit is required here, and he has affirmed the board's current interpretation, which is that both are required. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Jane, would you like to comment?
I think I don't have a whole lot to add after Sherry and Carl, they were very thorough, I think.
Okay, all righty. Thank you so much. At this point, I am going to welcome the public to come up and comment, say their part, and we'll go from there.
New information?
New information.
Happy New Year, and thank you for your volunteer service. The document that I'm beginning with is a document that I'd like you to turn to page eight and page nine. This is a document submitted by the applicant, do I pronounce it Clavon or Clavon? Clavon, and I'm gonna read to you what it says. You recall that the applicant went to the zoning board of appeals, asking for a variance to shoehorn as many panels as possible into the 50-foot setback. They were denied that. When they made that application, they said that the regulations impose a 50-foot wide vegetated buffer on all sides of the facility, starting at each property boundary and extending inwards toward the center of the property. This would leave the majority of the property unbuildable, thereby rendering the facility impossible to build as planned, and financially unworkable to build an aversion sufficiently scaled down to fit in remaining slivers of the parcel they went on to say. And I'm quoting now the applicant. Without that variance, which they did not get, the project would not be financially practical. For the petitioner, to construct the facility and the property if it required to incorporate the 50-foot wide vegetated buffer on the ton of facility, and then they conclude by saying, as a consequence, they would not be able to sell power generated to the facility. Financially unworkable, not financially practicable. That means not feasible, that means not possible. This is a big deal. How do you go from not viable a couple of months ago, if you didn't have this variance, to what they plead today, that they're in for the long run and they're financially as good as it gets? Adding a few panels between then and now doesn't take you from not viable to what they're representing they are. We need a timeout. We need to figure something out here. You need an expert to figure out if these people really have a financially viable project in front of you. Were they telling the truth at the ZBA? Were they not telling the truth at the ZBA? Are they telling the truth to us here? The impact is not just the credibility, but it bears upon everything you were just talking about. Decommissioning, the amount, and what still is not mentioned, mind-bogglingly, is the type of currency of the security. It also calls into question Section 1566.8, which was minimized. It's there for a reason. If you've got a reasonable basis to conclude that the applicant doesn't have the dough to operate, you need to be assured you're not gonna be stuck with that problem. Forget about decommissioning problems, and it has an impact in the interconnection agreement, if they ever get one. Remember, Quirk has forgotten more, I'm sure, than I'll ever know about this, but financial viability is crucial to get any interconnection agreement. They say, ha-dee-ha-dee-ha, your regulations say, all you have to do is inform them. Did you inform them that your project is not financially viable if you can't build within the 50-foot setback requirement? You're reminded kindly that I'm speaking for 50 citizens, many of whom, it seems like COVID has hit, Charles Longwood like crazy, we got single moms, we got people who teach, we got a mom who's got two kids getting on the boat, mass maritime for two months, couldn't be here, so I appreciate, appreciate your allowing us to be efficient by speaking for them. Our comments weren't posted on the website. I had to send them to you directly. I apologize for that, but what else could we do? The applicants were posted, and the applicant explained tonight that they got our comments through you, Mr. Chairman, how'd they get them? Why are some posted and not us? Mr. Corbett recently observed something very intelligent, many times, but one in particular.
Only one?
You called, I'm sorry, you called to our attention another site, and you made the point that the site used to be a gun range, and the logical, sensible point you're making is, as a consequence of the usage of that property, would that have changed the soil hydrology, is it lead, we should check it out? You didn't want to engage in theater about who did it, you just wanted to know what's the impact on the land. We've been trying to say that for six months, for eight months. Our point is that substantial portions of this land have been changed and filled with and filled with who knows what.
I'm right here, Barry. Would you like to ask me?
No, please, Mr. Fletcher, please don't do that.
We have asked for a sophisticated, real-world, Fairing Hill-type soil testing and hydrology examination because of this. Think of it as the gun range. It's the same point. Our contention is not that the applicant is disentitled to approval just because of who they are. Our point is the same as Mr. Corbett's. We don't care if it's owned by the Dalai Lama. I'm sick of this, but we gotta say it. They come up here again tonight and say there's no investigation. I have given you three times a copy from the Conservation Commission that says there is an inspection, three.
Three times. And again, we've asked new information. That's old information. So please don't reiterate what we've already heard.
It's new information. With all respect, Your Honor, it's new information when somebody else up here and says it ain't so, right?
Just, if you could, just move on from that subject. We've heard it.
The same is true with the emails we presented you demonstrating on the earth removal. It was mentioned that this property is not in the groundwater protection overlay district. The groundwater protection overlay district is the whole town, am I right? The point is, this site has been treated like it's perfect. We had to listen to people say, well, there are no neighbors up there. Well, we get 37 people from Charles Pond Road who consider themselves neighbors. And there's another point to be made here, on this soil examination, why it's so important. The regulations at 595 say that all the wiring has to be three feet or more deep down, right? Well, the test bits, the insufficient number of test bits they drilled, they drilled, show the groundwater is above 36 inches. So all that stuff's going to be running in the water? Seems to me another example why we need the soil. We have a CPA who's waiting to talk. He'll address this decommissioning issue as it relates to the importance of having experts to help you in the amounts and the currency. But let me just say this. What's proposed as their, I forget what they call it, early update, this is an IQ test, and I have confidence as a town, we will not funk it. The third baseman for the Red Sox just signed $11,333,000, billion-dollar, whatever it was, deal. You can bet your life there's not a provision in that that says, well, we just negotiated this for 10 months, but on the first, before the first pitch on opening day, we're going to renegotiate it all over again, precisely your point. And worse than that, are we dumb enough to say we'll delegate to somebody else who's going to pick a number after we spent months trying to get to the right number? Don't fall for it. If you're gonna buy into that gimmickry, at the very least, establish a provision that says the number can't be any lower than what you set at the outset. And I point out that the Wells case, which a gentleman said he couldn't find in a two-page opinion, any reference to water supply, it's there four times, wouldn't permit you, in our judgment, to put that off. I also want to switch now to the solar panels. We've been hearing forever they're going to use First Solar, right? Anybody read page one of their new decommissioning plan? Paragraph one, whoa. It says, those are the panels that are being considered, and they may include them or other similar models. So they're betting the whole farm on that one letter from First Solar, but this letter suggests to me that maybe that isn't what's going to be used. And on the issue of First Solar, they issued, they delivered a study from West Virginia. So they say. We called the author of the study unsolicited. The first thing he said is, I don't happen to be a fan of solar projects where you deforest to put them in place, unsolicited. It's not a peer-reviewed study, according to him. It is, guess who funded it? Any guesses?
Please don't do that.
It wasn't funded by a university. It was funded by an entity promoting solar. And where was their biggest source of information? The same guy who signed the letter for First Solar. Also mentioned he wouldn't live in a neighborhood, unsolicited. He said, I would not live in a neighborhood where cadmium plating was going on. Now, in fairness, cladium, cadmium, excuse me, is very different than clodium telluride, which is a compound which is safer, there's no question. If they're so confident of all their science, why any pushback at all on the monitoring wells? As the point was made, the monitoring wells helped them. It creates a baseline so that they couldn't be blamed for something that was already there. On the right-of-way issue, we can agree to disagree of what well holds. But this is a matter that is central to the permitting authorities, and the smart move, the safe move, excuse me, is to not close the hearing and wait and see what comes of that. And the same is true if you choose to bring in an expert to help you on the financial issues we've mentioned. On the issue of conditions, we proposed 26, now 27, conditions. It was mentioned a moment ago it wouldn't be fair to require them of one and one another. Half of those conditions were already required by Fairing Hill before their hearing was even closed. They already had to do them. We went back and watched hours of video, and the guy got up and said, hey, can I recap everything we've done? He went on for an hour. We've asked for the same stuff. Now, the points were raised tonight. The decommissioning renegotiation, it's a gimmick. Don't call for it. It's not a procedural safeguard. It's an effort to renegotiate the deal, to recut the deal, and to put the decision in the hands of people other than yourselves, other than the town. Not an overlay district, false. Water not mentioned in the well, in the well case, it's right here, it is. I mentioned the issue of monitoring wells, helping the landlord. Now, listen to this. We're talking about the first line of defense. Is it a surety bond? Is it the land or whatever? Stop and think. Think the all your years you've lived in Wareham. How many times has your insurance company changed? No, your broker, your insurance company. Raise your hand if you get the same insurance company for the last 30 years. Same broker. Good for you. You're lucky. They come and they go. They come and they go. And all this business about who's going to protect, there's something called an LLC or a corporation. They put that land, they put their company in LLC, they bankrupt it, you get nothing. Zip up. The surety bond business in this space is very immature. Those rates will change as they get experienced. Their actuaries will get experience. And they may run from this. Cash, cash, cash. That is the only way to answer your question, how you protect, whether it be level one, level two tomorrow or 20 years from now. It's cash. Their rates go up as the experience goes up. It's one thing to pay a surety bond company, you get nothing back. You put it in cash, at least you'll earn the interest on it while it's sitting in the company, in the town's hands, excuse me. So the incremental cost of a bond has to be compared to what the cash outlay would be, what the return would be. Our group is very disappointed that we've been treated the way we have, to put in the volunteer time we have and have our stuff not be posted, and have, and it's not even fair to the applicant to have not had it, but somebody gave it to him. We've submitted a lot of stuff. Do you have any questions? Or maybe it's better that I respectfully ask that I be able to answer any questions you may have at the end after our other speakers and everybody, whatever, appear next. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'll, I'll hold my questions until your other speakers have. Somebody else in the audience need to come up?
Catherine Papalardo, Fairing Hill Road. I think mine is more of a question. I thought they were going to do a hydrology study. I thought Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Buckland were talking about having this. Also have a hydrological study due to its location with being as close to the aquifer as it is, and that it already had had sand mining. So is, is that not going to happen?
That was a discussion that was taking place in some of the meetings. It has not been determined whether or not that it's going to happen.
Okay. I hope you'll consider that. Thank you.
I'm going to let the people that are in the audience go first.
My name is Catherine Harrelson. I'm with Save the Pine Barrens, 158 Center Hill Road, Plymouth, Massachusetts. The comments I'm going to be making here tonight are, were actually originally echoed by Ms. Quirk over there, so I apologize if there's any repetition. Prior to the meeting, I reread the latest decommissioning plan that was submitted by the applicant, and I read for the first time that includes two battery energy storage systems. According to the plan, there will be a fenced-off area, approximately one acre, in which the two energy storage systems will be located. The batteries themselves will be inside storage containers. The storage containers will be placed on concrete pads. The pads themselves will be surrounded by permeable gravel, which I would, which I would assume makes up the bulk of the one-acre fenced-off area. So I'd like to bring awareness to the board that battery, battery energy storage systems are not without their own risks. They pose risks when cited in the wrong place. When they're cited, municipalities are left on their own to determine the suitable locations, assess the risks, and ensure that emergency responders are prepared. Thermal runaway, although very rare, is a major safety concern with battery storage facilities and can happen when high temperatures are reached within the battery due to faulty cells. These fires are extremely difficult to contain and will continue even when water is used on them. Large amounts of contaminated water from extinguishment efforts for battery fires will often leach into the surrounding waterways, soils, and ecosystems. And I'd like to reiterate that the concrete pads will be surrounded by gravel. The general composition of lithium-ion batteries includes toxic elements such as cobalt, which under fire conditions, intoxic gases can be generated, such as hydrogen fluoride gas, which, when mixed with water, creates hydrofluoric acid. I have here in my packet the letter from the Wareham Fire Department dated July 21, 2021, directed to the Town of Wareham Planning Board. I won't go through it in detail because it seems the board is already aware of this letter, but some of the conditions imposed on the Fairing Hill property, which also included battery, battery energy storage systems, included emergency responder training. Proposed battery storage systems shall have an approved supervised smoke detection, fire alarm system, a thermal runaway system detection system, and a temperature-maintained operating environment. The conditions also include integrated fire suppression and detection systems. Local external disconnects will be installed. An emergency response plan shall be included for the battery energy storage systems. And there were other conditions as well. I went through the documents on the Wareham Planning Board, and I have a document here dated November 30, 2022. It's called the Operation and Maintenance Plan for Wareham Solar, Route 25. It's less than three pages long. There's some boilerplate language in here about just general maintenance of the solar facility, including landscaping, testing, staff training. It does not mention fire safety. Just, you know, general supervisory activities regarding the solar panels themselves and the landscaping that's around them. I don't see reference in the Operation and Maintenance Plan to the battery energy storage system. I'd like to conclude my statements by saying that I am not opposed to solar energy. I believe that solar energy will and have to be a part of our energy future, but I want solar energy to be cited in the appropriate locations on our built environment, in our industrial landscapes, in our commercial environment, where we have paved landscapes, where we have stormwater retention systems, and we have treatment for any runoff that is generated on the solar panels. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Annie, you know what I'm going to say, right?
No new stuff.
I only, I only want new stuff, please.
Oh, I've listened to you too long, Michael. I apologize for the muddle that I-
Identify yourself.
Oh, sorry, Annie Hayes-Fermersley. I apologize for the muddle I sent you. I have been sick since our last meeting at the beginning of December. I am pushing back against the assertions of no PFAS, the recycling, and also of the no leaching that were made at the last meeting. And I said I would send the information, and I, I may have, but even I don't know. It was so muddled. In order to test for toxic leaching and PFAS chemicals, we have to know what tests have been given, by whom they've been made, and what the data is from those tests. We got none of that. And we need to know the precise make and model of the definitive module to be installed. Multiple proponents have said, when I've said, for example, that LG didn't make panels anymore, I was told it really didn't matter because they wouldn't know what panels they were going to use until they began construction. And I said, well, I didn't think that the planning board was operating that way anymore. But I have been told again by the attorneys of that project that that was the case. They couldn't possibly know until they began construction. So I think that's an issue. A scientific verifiable protocol to assess panels seems to be essential, as well as the cost of decommission. I think you've done a great job on that. But I still think there are many issues about what's in these First Solar panels and what happens to them. The first claim is one in, that's been posted by Dr. Annec Antiel from U. Michigan Engineering Department, claiming there are no PFAS in solar panels. At the time, she was in the engineering department, she still is, but it had massive fundings from Dow Chemical that was also, is also in Midland, Michigan, where that University of Michigan is. Her statement about the lack of PFAS in solar panels was additionally added by saying that the public is often confused by what is a PFAS and what is benign. She said Tedlar was benign, that it was not a PFAS, and at the same time Dow is manufacturing, Dow Dupont is manufacturing Tedlar. I'm not accusing her, but I can see that the influence may be there. What she's, oh, what the Royal Society of Chemistry in 2021 said, polyvinyl fluoride is absolutely a PFAS. It's listed as a PFAS in three different applications, solar applications, photovoltaics, and backside films and frontside films for solar. The, okay, what, what, I'll get to that in a minute. The scientific basis for managing PFAS as a chemical class by Environmental Science and Technology Letters of the American Chemical Society in 2020 says the class includes perfluorous acids, perfluoralkyl ether acids, and their precursors, fluoropolymers, that's what PF is, perfluoropolyethers, and other PFAS. And they say that the basis of the class approach is presented in relation to their physicochemical, environmental, and toxicological properties. Specifically, the hyper-sistant accumulation potential and/or hazards of PFAS studied to date warrant treating all PFAS as a single class. What, Dr. Antiel is now with the National Science Foundation, grant for many years. And what she says about solar now is she says, if you get better performance out of the solar cell because it uses a scarce or toxic material, you haven't necessarily made anything better. The solar cell may work better, but you've also created a new problem. I think she's talking specifically- I think she's talking specifically of First Solar cadmium telluride because they have that scarce, rare earth tellurium that is necessary and has a lot of political and other worrisome issues that I refer to in this paper. And also, the toxic material is certainly cadmium, which First Solar also recognizes as toxic. She says, I'm not trying to kill solar. It's making sure that in five or 10 years from now, we don't find out there's a new environmental disaster. The same person that they referred to as saying PFAS don't exist in panels. I also called our local certified Massachusetts PFAS lab analytics, what is it called, Alpha Analytics, and I have a copy of that in here. She sent me an email so that you would not have hearsay. She said, we perform SPLP extractions by EPA 312, da-da-da-da. Both messages require the solid material. This is if we put some of the panel, gave them it to test. Require the solid material to tumble for 18 plus or minus 2 hours. That's less than 24 hours of tumbling in one pH. PFAS analysis performed on the tumble fluid would be performed by our in-house 537 model methoded, and attached is our list of 41 reportable PFAS components. What the representative for Long Road said about what I consider the gold standard of testing for cadmium telluride solute and its ability to leach out was, as I've mentioned before, old stuff, but let me say, the Institute for Photovoltaics and Research Center scope from the University of Stuttgart, Germany, the Institute for Sanitary Engineering Water Quality and Solid Waste Management, same institute from 2021, a 1.5-year study, and they say, toxic materials such as cadmium and lead will be leached out completely. It's only a question of time. I have the study so that you can read over the details. I looked at the Virginia Tech. They only did the leachate study for 24 hours. They said, quote, they verified only slight leaching occurred after 24-hour baths. I don't consider any of these definitive rebuttals of our concerns about toxicity in the CDT E panel. I also don't know if there's a hydrophobic coating, which is Tedlar, on those panels, and I don't see why that glass would not want that to not accumulate dust as well. So that would be a question. This goes back to the assertion of First Solar that they are the green company. They had the prepaid up until 2013 program for recycling, and they say to this day, they have all of the same stuff, but it's, you have to pay. And as we've heard, we don't have an estimate from them, but as we've heard, $1 to $2 to dump it and $20 to $30 to appropriately recycle. And there are some issues in the science that I've researched about how First Solar recycles, but it's for pay. What they say repeatedly in their current estimations or their current assertions is that the semiconductor cadmium telluride is recycled in such a way that it can be reused again and again. It's reuse recycle. It's not just recycle. Reused 41 times. Now, that's a gold standard of using toxic material like cadmium and rare-earth material And that goes back to what was stated in the First Solar's Inconvenient Truth article I gave you, Mike. I'm not sure that that was ever posted. I never saw it on the information on the website. Now, I go to, I also said I would present or print out First Solar's annual 2021 report. I still haven't seen any 2022 report posted because that, as we know, has just concluded that year. And they have 20-plus pages of risk assessments. Now, that's a lot. I've looked at other companies, but 22 pages is a lot, and I think they're very informative. One is hazardous materials, page 35. It's referenced numerous times. Elemental cadmium and certain of its compounds are regulated as hazardous materials due to the adverse effects, health effects that may arise from humans. So have to have these materials in our products. In addition, the risk of exposure is further minimized by the encapsulated nature of these materials in our products and the recycling or responsible disposal of our modules. I'm going to jump to the decommissioning. Great to have enough money, but I'm concerned about the fact that they say that recycling is reselling or giving away for free after 15 to 25 years. So we get it out of town, but in that number of years, and I think even very shortly, there's going to be regulation in our state for whole life cycle, what chemicals go into the making of the semiconductor and the rest of the panel, and the end of life. They are not going to allow a community, and I don't think ethically we should allow ourselves to be party to, let's just get it out of town, we'll resell it, and they can deal with it. Well, who is going to deal with it in a more expensive way than they got it at a resale? I don't think so. Or given for free. It's going to go to third-world countries. It's going to be trashed. It's going to pollute their environment, and their environment is already being polluted by all of the manufacturing that we're doing. There's some analysis of how our getting to our 2050 goals will trash how many environments and how many different countries.
Okay, if you could wrap up for me, please.
I can wrap up because you're going to make me.
Just requesting. A lot of what you've said, we've heard, but I bit my tongue and I allowed you to go through it, so if you could just wrap up, that would be great.
Well, you could tell me that another time, but I don't, I think it's new. I wanted to speak to the fact that they had been subject to multiple lawsuits, and they had paid recently $350 million to settle them. And it was around asserted fraud in production claims and market performance of the Series Six modules. I think that's the module that Long Road has proposed for us. The company's Serial Six Module was not commercially ready at the time of its release, had a component that was failing in the field and causing fires, was not able to hit its projected and touted wattage targets, had an inconsistent output, and as a result, defendants' positive statements about the company's business operations and prospects were materially misleading and/or lacked a reasonable basis at all relevant times. There were tens of thousands of individual investors who were damaged when, because of the fraudulent claims, the stock's value went down.
I understand what you're saying. I think you're trying to hold the proponent accountable for somebody else's poor business practices. I don't think that that's reasonable.
I'm talking about a series panel that might be ours.
I understand what you're talking about very well.
Okay, but, okay, well, you don't think it's relevant? I think that there was fraud and for...
There's fraud all through the world, Annie.
I know, but the reasons, Mike, for the fraud.
I understand. Just, please, wrap up.
Are relevant to these panels, okay. So in the, I don't know what to say. I'll stay, and you can cut me off. First Solar then divested of its project development.
Yep, you've mentioned that to us before, too.
No, I did not. I've never, this is all new research on my part, and some of the project was purchased by Long Road. So 900 megawatts of First Solar projects with a potential 1 to 2 gigawatts of battery storage, battery space, and also 900 megawatts of Series Six modules. So I don't know what we're getting or what they're really proposing. The last issue, because they're expanding like gangbusters. They're the one solar panel that is being promoted by the United States Department of Energy, all the politics around it, because they are not polysilicon. And there's a big push to stop China's militaristic advantage, stop their economic advantage from United States purchasing and technology. And as we've seen, the anti-dumping tariffs had effect, have effect, the homeland security, anti-Uyghur forced labor is implemented, and a lot of these panels are having a hard time getting into our country. First Solar is booming, and I'm very concerned about all of that internal material being spread across. And also, one of the things that in their risk assessment they talk about is there, it was somewhat startling, let's see if I can find it. It's about that even though they don't have, they're not using polysilicon, they're using cadmium telluride as their semiconductor, the Forced Labor Prevention Act that applies to polysilicon use may come around to having some, not that same one, but the forced labor may come around to their enterprise and force them to change their technology. There is a lot of evidence...
If you, give you one minute to wrap up.
I got it. That they are using tellurium, which is 60% of the global tellurium is in China, and First Solar is using 75% of the global amount. It's called First Solar's opaque, not transparent source of tellurium, and there's a lot of information there, expecting by 2024 to double by 100%. Their panels around, that are being in production, some of them are postponed, however, till '25, '26. There's a rare-earth war. Can the US even compete with China? We do not produce enough tellurium, and these panels cannot be made without it. China dominates the rare-earth market. They're raising the price exponentially. This affects all of the costs that we're talking about because they're using it as a cudgel to counter the American tariffs and squashing of American technology to China and their economy. So I know it's hard for me to, on the wing, put it all together, but I tried, and I have a copy of this to send, to give to you and to have sent out and replace the bungo job that I did on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there somebody waiting?
Two online.
Two online, huh?
Nancy's free.
I see Nancy. The people online have been waiting very patiently, so I'm going to give one of them a chance, and then I'll have you come up.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can, if you could identify yourself, please.
Yes, my name is George Ekman, 64 Blackmore Pond Circle. As a CPA, I tend to focus on financial issues, and I'll be addressing three areas of financial risk for the town. By the way, I will be mercifully brief, having restricted my comments to four minutes.
Thank you.
So the first area is adequacy of decommissioning cost provisions. The second is the currency of the decommissioning reserves, and the third is the need for a performance guarantee. So as previously discussed, the potential costs associated with the decommissioning of solar installations undoubtedly represent the most significant financial exposure to the town, and for this reason, we believe this issue should be brought front and center on this in all future solar projects. In this regard, we want to commend the applicant for increasing their decommissioning cost provisions for the solar panels to 1.6 million. This amount is a significant improvement over the previously submitted figures. At the same time, the town should insist on increasing to $450,000 to separate security to cover the decommissioning of the batteries and transformers. The current amount of $175,000 could leave the town significantly exposed. But above notwithstanding, I think it's safe to say that no one here, myself included, has the expertise to confidently attest to the adequacy of these reserve amounts. Bottom line is, from the discussion earlier, the numbers are still on significant flux, so we can't even agree on it here today. As a result, we strongly recommend the town exercises its discretion by engaging independent expert bond counsel to advise it in determining how best to protect us from long-term financial and environmental risk presented by the proposed project. The applicant should, of course, pay the costs incurred. It's also unclear that the amount of 3% built in for inflation will be adequate to cover the 30-year life of the project. In fact, it isn't even adequate for today. So we recommend this percentage be reviewed and updated by the town on an annual basis. All of these reserves should, of course, be incremented by the 25% contingency requirement. Second, because of the sheer number and magnitude of the decommissioning unknowns, we respectfully recommend that the decommissioning security include hard cash and surety bonds. We recommend the cash portion be 50% to start, ramping up by 10% every three years, requiring the cash portion of the security to grow throughout the early stages of the project's life is undoubtedly the best way to protect the town, and requiring the security to be held in the form of letters of credit or a cash escrow account further solidifies the town's position. And when any applicant signals financial concerns before a project has even begun, which is the case we have before us now, this body should not be made to feel hurried to close the hearing, but instead, it should double down on its efforts to ensure the town is well-protected from any unfavorable financial difficulties that may be experienced by the applicant. Third, and finally, is a matter that looks to have been overlooked, and that's the need for the applicant to post an adequate performance guarantee. This option is available to the town under Section 1566.8 of our zoning bylaws, which were specifically put in place to mitigate the financial risk to the town for the failure of the applicant to either complete the construction of the project, or worse, for any environmental harm caused by the project. Bylaw states that if such guarantee is required, the funds should be deposited in this account before the issuance of a building permit. Goes on to state, a deposit of such funds shall be made in a joint passbook with the town. In other words, the deposit should be made in cash. So just to summarize the three significant areas of concern, the town should engage a professional bond agent to determine the adequacy of the decommissioning reserves and the associated inflation assumptions. Number two, the decommissioning reserves should have a strong and increasing cash component to further protect the town. And three, an adequate cash performance guarantee should be required to be posted by the applicant before any construction begins. Thank you very much and appreciate your continuing service to the town.
Thank you. Just so Annie doesn't feel like I'm picking on her, I'm going to say the same thing to you.
New stuff.
Just, please, new stuff.
New stuff.
We've been at this a long, long time. I don't want to burn any more time hearing what we've already heard.
No, no, and that's more than fine, and that's part of my quandary right here. As we've gone through this journey together, I don't remember hearing much, if anything, about batteries at the very beginning of this story, and yet, batteries are here now. So the question is, is has the amount of battery storage being proposed increased in this project in the 1222 site plan?
Well, regardless, I think, at least in my mind, regardless of whether they came to us on day one with a D-cell Duracell and then slowly built it up, it's still what we have in front of us today is what we're discussing. So if it went from a small battery to a big battery, that's what's being taken into account. We're not making decisions on what happened a year ago or two years ago.
Okay. That then brings up the question of if it's gone from a small battery to a big battery, is that because more energy is going to be generated on-site? is that because more energy is going to be generated on-site, or because they're importing excess energy from someplace else to store in their batteries and then transfer out later?
That I can't answer. I don't know what their business model is, so-
I believe that question was asked and answered several sessions ago, and I'll, we can defer back to the applicant, but I understood that this is only for storage of power generated on-site. I believe that was stated at some session, but if I'm wrong, we should get that clarified.
I would appreciate clarification on that.
Okay. Would you like to weigh in?
Sure. Attorney Mike. Sorry. It's a little bit more nuanced answer than was the case before the Inflation Reduction Act was passed. But basically, the Massachusetts Smart Solar Incentive Program requires that large ground mound projects have co-located energy storage. The program doesn't require that the battery storage be charged exclusively through solar energy, but the idea is that by combining intermittent generation and storage on-site, the storage will be available to capture excess energy that can best be stored when the regional grid doesn't need it. And that does two things. It reduces the impact of intermittent energy generation on the energy grid, and it also allows the solar energy to be captured and used, where it can have greater both economic impacts and environmental impacts. So, environmental impacts meaning the stored power can be discharged at so-called clean peak times, when peak power might have been obtained from higher polluting gas plants, or maybe a few remaining coal plants in the New England grid, but instead can come from this stored energy. Even energy that is not generated by the solar facility that's stored has a lower carbon footprint than the energy that would be used to meet peak demand in the system.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to, I'm going to try and simplify. We were told in no uncertain terms, and I have to go back and find it now, but that these batteries were not going to be used to take energy off the grid. I understand the whole rationale behind that model. The town isn't ready for that model yet, and we were assured that, I'm, I'll have to double-check. I, excuse me, when I say we were assured, I believe we were assured that that wasn't the model. I'm hearing you say now, this is the model, and it is now the requirement. So, I want to ask a clarifying question. So, I think I understand what you've said. In this project, you're going to take power off the grid, use your batteries to store it, and then put energy back on the grid at other times, whenever it makes sense, not just store energy generated by your solar panels. Is it, first, let me, is that what you said?
No, not exactly. When, I don't know that there's any, actually, maybe Matt can, do you have any further technical information about the business model?
You gotta, yeah, you gotta come forward, please.
The plant is primarily designed to absorb excess energy. It's called, during the day, sunlight, you know-
I understand.
I understand that, so yes.
I want to know if you're taking energy off the grid and putting it in your batteries.
It's primarily designed to use the energy we produce and-
Primarily designed. Are you taking energy off the grid and storing it in your batteries?
I think it will be designed for, where there will be opportunities where we could, yes.
Okay.
A yes. An actually definitive answer.
Yes. So, it's different than what was originally discussed, is that correct?
Unfortunately, I wasn't here at those prior meetings, so I don't know what was discussed.
We were.
Right, right, you all were, so I'll have to take your-
So, now, just, you've clarified that. This is now, one more question. So, Attorney Clavens, you said that there were some changes in the law, the Investment Recovery Act, and some SMART Act that's caused, is your, should I conclude from your statement that all solar projects in town that have battery storage are now going to be taking energy off the grid and storing them?
No, I think most projects would operate in the manner that Matt mentions, that most of the time, they'd be being charged by the solar facility. But I think it would be going too far to say that that would be the exclusive operation. So, what the SMART program requires in Massachusetts is that for the benefit of the grid, electricity consumers, and the environment, storage be co-located with solar. The SMART program neither requires that it only be charged with solar, nor prohibits that. The other change was that previously, federal tax credits for solar facilities extended to the batteries that were installed with them, as long as they were charged at least 75% of the time by the solar facility. So, but even under the old regime, up to 25% of the time, they might be charged by some grid power.
Again, as we've been learning this whole journey, that's all news to me.
I mean, the fundamental difference is that the DC, where you put the batteries, and whether they're on the DC side, where the solar panels are, you know, kind of behind the inverters, or they're on the other side, kind of post-inverters. And that's really the only design or distinction, that you could then isolate the batteries to only kind of push power one direction.
I understand the engineering design, I understand the long-term rationale. As I said, we've considered this issue in town and decided the town was not ready for battery storage to be taking energy off the grid, and we haven't had time to understand the impact. So, this is a change that's new to me.
Yeah. I mean, I guess that says that all of the other projects that have battery storage proposed, if the storage is on the AC side, they have that capability.
Right. And-
I just don't, what's the concern from the town's perspective? Is it-
We don't understand the impact. And there have been comments made about the concern about lithium battery storage anyway. My personal, I can only speak to my personal opinion, is that we, I personally believed that isolating it from the grid gave us a little more protection on battery overload. That was my understanding prior to this morning, or this afternoon.
Okay.
And I'm also concerned that we asked this question, I believe, and thought that we had an answer, and this is a different answer.
And I think what the town, or at least what the planning board, has discussed is possibly embarking on a process to understand and adopt bylaws for this situation. So, you're catching us off-guard and feeling like we're not, we're not ready to understand and, you know, opine on this yet. So, we probably need to spend a little-
We thought we had time.
Yeah.
Apparently, we don't.
Obviously not.
Right. And we were-
Select Board, and I-
I could say-
Looking at Tricia, but that's okay.
Matt and I were not aware of-
No, I'm just saying, we tried to get the Select Board to deal with this.
Sorry. Matt and I were not aware of any particular sensitivities around this. I understand some town sensitivities around what's called standalone storage.
That's what we were talking about in general, but yes.
Yeah. And I know, and the industry doesn't view this as standalone storage. This is co-located.
Now, we've identified a space in between that we weren't, we haven't regulated yet.
If I may-
Thank you for answering that question, yes.
Yes. Thank you very much for answering that question, but that does speak to why the, why the project could now be considered viable when it might not have been back before, when it was before the CBA. But that's a different conversation. The conversation I want to have right now is whether or not the current bylaw allows this to happen, because it's my understanding that the bylaw that is in place right now says that it's only ancillary to the particular solar project, that anything coming in is not generated by those solar panels.
We need to go back and re-review.
Right. Right. So, I think that is an enormous difference. Sorry.
Thank you.
No, it's important.
No, don't be sorry.
I just, how did you get clued into this? Because I-
It's why, because-
I'm just interested in-
My spidey sense is out there, and when I can't make X and Y next to each other and look at them together, I can't coordinate what's going on. And when I see that difference, I need to say, excuse me, I don't understand this.
We'll have to read the bylaw and try and apply it to this condition.
Right. And the bylaw that's still sitting on the Attorney General's office-
Doesn't, doesn't apply.
Yeah.
What it does is it says that it's only, I mean, it doesn't apply to this, but we tried to address it, saying that it was only for that. We made it very specific. But I appreciate your time, your energy, and now your consideration. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. One more online? Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mary Horahan, and I live at 10 Carmichael Way in West Wareham. I am concerned about the project due to all of the potential ramifications we've already discussed here. I just feel like these solar developments are coming fast and furious to Wareham despite all of the uncertainties that we're facing. In today's climate, climate, excuse me, of generous taxpayer subsidies to the developers, essentially, the residents of Wareham are being forced to bankroll further deforestation of our town and potentially pollute the aquifer which supplies the water we drink. And as for the decommissioning, we can't possibly know what it will look like then, but I think what we can know is that in 25 years, when this installation has outlived its usefulness, there will be thousands, potentially thousands, of installations decommissioning at the same time. And so, I think what we can know is that the volume that's going to need to be disposed of will be immense. I think the removal will be complicated, and I think it'll be very expensive. And in the reading that I've been doing, I found a number of sources, MIT being one, that has noted that the recycling of these panels is far more costly than the discarding of them, and the discarding of them is by no means assured, simply because of the differences in manufacturing. You know, how these panels are manufactured determines how or if they can be discarded based on what they've been made of. So, you know, MIT also notes, you know, that the manufacture and the transportation and the disposal itself generates emissions, and that all of this must be taken into account when we are assessing the environmental and financial impacts of these projects. So, to me, it's not a given that this is a net gain for the town, especially when our forests are being cleared and our aquifer could potentially be polluted. I don't think those are risks we want to take and expose our residents to. So, I just ask that you, the board, continue your thoughtful analysis, which I really feel that it has been, and I thank you for that. Thanks for all your work on this and for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
One more that raised our hand.
That'll be it.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Hi, my name is Jeannie Lennon. I'm, I live at 93 Blackmore Pond Circle in West Wareham. I just, I'm kind of flabbergasted by these, by these meetings, because rather than getting, you know, clarification of and feeling good about proceeding on this project, every single time I come to one of these meetings, I feel more and more confused and more and more concerned. And none of my concerns have really been abated from the very beginning. I'm concerned about environmental impact. I'm concerned about health and safety impact. I'm concerned now about the financial risks to the town. And I agree with the last caller that I believe that this board has been very thoughtful in the way it's been handling this. And, you know, I hope that, I know that you will continue to do so to protect the town, because I think a hydrological and soil study needs to be done, and I think, you know, the CPA brought up some really great points about the financial risks and possible ways to look into those concerns. So, like the former caller, I appreciate all the town has done, and I know that you'll continue to do so, because the stakes are very high here, and we need to remember that, you know, the board's primary responsibility is to the town of Wareham and its residents. And I thank you for protecting us so far, and I hope and pray that you will continue to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nobody else?
Barry wanted to rebut.
One question, please, just one through you.
Yeah, if you could come up, Barry.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the applicant, yes or no, is the battery going to be designed to receive power from any of the neighboring solar fields?
No.
And yes or no, it is presently contemplated to be designed to receive excess energy from the utility heading from the street down to the battery, true?
Yes.
Thank you. I hope Town Council will be made aware of that in the negotiations on the easement question. Thank you.
My head hurts.
I can tell we're making progress.
I thought we were too.
Changing every day, Mike.
Huh?
Rules are changing every day.
Well, they are.
It seems like the solar industry is calculating how the rules are going to be written.
Well, not of the state, but the federal.
Right.
Solar companies write in with them.
I think-
It's all about big business owning us, you know?
Yeah. And I think we're-
I have to just read the bylaw.
Where, you know, we're walking a very fine line between landowner rights, state law.
It's all of the money.
Well, regardless, not that I agree or disagree, I'm not going to head down that path, Mike, but, you know, whether the money heads in one direction or another is irrelevant. If it's, if it's a legal entity that's allowed to do business under a certain set of rules, we've got to consider it.
We don't trust the politicians we have in White House now.
That has, that doesn't have anything to do with this.
Sure it does.
Oh, it does, Mike. The reason this is happening is the money from the government, the tax credits and the write-offs and everything. If the people are really concerned, look at your congressmen, they are willing to cut down all the trees in Wareham.
They don't live here.
And they're, these guys are going to be paid for it, the tax credits, and that's the problem. It's not the Wareham Planning Board, it's the officials that you elect time and time again that give the tax credits, that give all the benefits that they're getting- that give the tax credits, that give all the benefits that they're getting right now. It's not us, we can't solve the problem. They're going to make a lot of money because of the government, not because of anything else.
Right.
That's the real problem.
And, but it's something that's out of our control.
I agree 100%. But I wish you people would look at your congressman, that what he put forward, he would just look into it.
All right, so.
Yeah.
I can, I can guarantee you, from my standpoint anyway, based on all the input, again, and some questions that I have, that this hearing is not going to close tonight. So, we can take that right off the table. I mean, we'll put it to a vote, but I wouldn't expect anything different.
And I think we're okay with that. I mean, it seems like there's some new information that, you know, I wasn't aware of. I apologize for that, and we can work to rectify that.
You know, there was, there was a couple of thoughts that I had. There was concerns, obviously, about the interconnect and construction sequences. You know, my first thought is, is, you know, Blueberry Bush Number One doesn't get cut down until the interconnect is in hand. Period.
Correct.
The monitoring wells, again, I'm speaking for myself, I don't see anything other than that. I mean, town water is town water regardless of assertions of safety or assertions of unsafe. Monitoring wells will give us a constant stream of information. And, you know, hopefully you're proven right, then they're safe.
And a base, give you a baseline.
But at least it's there and it's a safeguard. I agree with, with Sherri 100%. I don't think external experts should be telling us what we should or should not be accepting in the way of revisiting the decommissioning plans. Fire concerns, to Barry's point, I think they should mimic very closely what we asked for in Farring Hill. I mean, it's only right, we're dealing with solar arrays and batteries in both locations. Why should one be treated any different than the other? It's the same fire department that has to respond to them. Decommissioning language as far as the removal and/or recycling of the panels which hap, you know, that's the hot topic is the panels. I mean, the, the steel and all that, country already knows how to recycle that, so that's not really an issue. I would say from my own personal comfort that the language, regardless of what, I forget which person said it, now I apologize about taking it out of town, the language has to stay unequivocally. It does not stay in town under any circumstances. Has to go, to, obviously to a, to a qualified recycler or reseller, whatever they may be, but they can't reside in Wareham. Period.
Mr. Chair, just if we could moderate that position. If somebody were to build such a facility in town, we would like to be able to leverage that, I would think, in the future.
Yeah, well, right now, we don't have that.
We don't have one.
Right.
So I think if, if we said the language, it has to go to a certified, qualified envi, whatever the language is, it doesn't matter where they are. It, it could even be in a third world country, addressing its concerns.
Just as long as it doesn't have a negative impact on the town of Wareham. And I think it will, let's see here.
Mr. Chairman.
Ma'am.
The statements in your letter to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the variance relating to the infeasibility of this project if the variance isn't granted, this, I have to say, this caused me some concern because I think we do want a company that, as we look at you, is capable of going forward with the project. And we've, we've assumed that. And it, it concerns me that these statements were made. And it would be helpful for me at some point, I don't know if it's tonight or another point, for some kind of explanation about why this could have been said at one point. And, and now it's not, it's no longer the case.
I think there were two big things, and Matt may be able to add some other color. One was that, under its previous design, if it was just chopped with the setbacks, there was great concern about whether the project could move forward. But the company committed to engaging internal, and external experts to redesign the project to really incorporate those setbacks. The other major thing happened in the meantime, between, I think, the July variance application and the ultimate redesign months later, was the Inflation Reduction Act federally, which changed the economics for the project.
Okay, thank you.
I'm almost done, Kyle, I promise.
As you're looking over your notes, Mr. Chairman, one other thing that I flagged was the language about the panels being First Solar or similar. That's, you know, I think we've had a lot of assurances about First Solar. You know, it's, yes, it would be important for us to come to some, some point of comfort on whatever panels you are going to use.
Yeah, so we have an exclusive supply agreement with First Solar for all of our projects. So, across the country, that's what we install and work for, work, you know. Main company we work with in, you know, if, if that's sort of a guarantee that's required as part of our project, you know, I think that we can, something we can discuss or, or implement. But we also like to keep our options open. If another manufacturer provides a more appealing US-made sort of panel, the ability to implement that. But if that is a point of pain for the, for the board here, then that's not anything that, you know, we need to be beholden to, is that optionality for this project.
So, just a follow-on question. Rather than holding you to a particular manufacturer, is there a way to specify functional, technical, environmental safety equivalents? Is there a way to frame that so that you're not locked into a manufacturer, but we get the same protections?
Is there a, is there a simple way to do that?
My question.
Yeah.
My feeling is probably not.
I think that's a question for a lawyer, to be honest.
Yeah, I, I think there is. I think one way to do it would be to say that, say in a condition, if there were a change of panel manufacturer that would materially impact the envi, the, you know, chemical components or environmental profile, environmental hazard profile of the panel, then it would be a modification requiring board review.
I think we're most, we, we're not concerned about your financials. We're mostly concerned about, good word, environmental profile.
Yeah.
And that's, yeah, that's something we could make a requirement to, for your all's approval of that change.
Does that, does that meet what you're trying to get to, Sherri?
Yeah, I think it does, yeah, yeah. And I guess, one other question. If we were to find that, that your battery storage needs to work the way that we have understood it to work, as opposed to how it was explained tonight, how does that affect your project?
Does, so, I guess, was it explained as it was DC coupled previously?
No, it was more general, as I remember it.
Right.
The direction of flow and the use of the storage. It wasn't an engineering discussion.
If, 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 if we said to you, the batteries can't do anything but store generated power, what's that do to your project?
It changes where we install the battery and the size of the batteries.
Okay.
Economics?
I don't know. I don't know.
It just seems if we're, if we're contemplating battery storage.
Oh, I can say that the battery storage component, I don't, is not a primary source of revenue for our project. From, from the ancillary.
It's more of complying with the requirement of the new laws?
Right, so it's, it's, it's extremely difficult to predict any sort of revenue from, what you're doing is arbitrage, right? You're taking power off the grid when it's high-priced and, or low-priced and selling it when it's high-priced, right? Effectively what you're doing, there's, there's, it's really difficult to sort of project how much you would make off of that. And so our base sort of case is, from a business standpoint, the power we're generating from our project and selling it.
Batteries are a bonus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wasn't so much concerned about the financials as to, we hadn't contemplated this. And I guess we need to decide if the bylaw, as currently written, would allow it. Because the new bylaw probably doesn't.
I mean, the, from a, the batteries and through their controls can actually be an advantage to the reliability of the grid?
Oh, I understand the whole, the whole.
Yeah, okay.
Design.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm missing on the sort of issue.
I, I think what you're getting at is that we're permitting this project as allowed large-scale ground-mounted solar array.
Right.
So.
Oh.
In many cases.
Batteries were just an ancillary use to the, to the storage of energy generated on-site. And now, I understand what, we, and we were envisioning the future of large-scale utility-grade battery systems having to deal with that. And I don't know that we thought about the hybrid case in the middle. You're catching.
Yeah.
Our regulation sort of.
Okay, well, okay.
We're trying to preserve that turf to be able to.
Yeah.
Develop bylaws that make sense for the town.
So. Yeah, well, the way we've seen some other towns treat storage as, as ancillary to solar is in two ways. One is that the storage equipment is almost treated as a component of the solar facility, just in the same way as a transformer, inverter, anything else. Another way we've seen towns address it is as an accessory use. That it's, it's now not just a, you know, customary use, customary accessory use to a principal solar use, but for large-scale solar, it's a required accessory use by the state.
Yeah, we, we were envisioning that, but.
Yeah.
Having it on the backside of the grid, or not directly connected to the grid to take energy in, the DC side or AC side.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
And, like, you caught us off-guard tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, Jane, are you still with us? I'm sure the gentle rocking of the boat is trying to put you to sleep.
The tough part is looking through transition glasses at you like this all night.
Do you have anything else?
I think you should take us on a tour.
It's dark now.
She's not coming back.
Do you have anything else, Jane? No?
No.
Can I say one other thing on decommissioning? Because I think we've bounced around a couple of ideas and maybe there's been one distortion of one concept. So, the, we introduced a couple of ideas. One was supporting the town's hiring of a peer reviewer so that you have a qualified engineer to advise you. The other was just to address your concern about differences of opinion, a independent qualified engineer. I understand if that last step is not advisable, but we really do have concerns about the town's not accepting our qualified engineer's viewpoint, but not having any qualified engineer on its, on its, to advise it. So, and that's, that's a big reason why we're arguing very strongly in favor of a peer review sooner rather than later. Not, not to renegotiate, as Mr. Cosgrove was saying, but so that the town has confidence that, in line with the bylaw, it's using qualified engineering estimates.
Well, I think to Mr. Cosgrove's point, and I would, I happen to agree with it, any review by two qualified engineers that come up to point A would never, in my estimation, allow the, the decommissioning value to drop below what's being proposed. If anything, it goes up.
And the new bylaw does say that. I don't think the old one does.
Right, there's no dropping it. It just either stays static or, or it rises. So, you know, that's something that you should keep in mind as well. No, I think we're all set, Barry. We've had enough input tonight. I'd like to wrap this up.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's getting late. Well, wait a minute, I think we have to, we have to schedule a meeting for that. Yeah, we've got to give them a date. Come on, Mike, I know you're getting cranky. It's past your bedtime.
Past his bedtime.
It's past his bedtime. Our next, our next meeting is on the 23rd, which I think is already starting to get clogged. Right? So, we would be looking at February 6th?
No.
No, next one, right, 13th. That, that should give you more than enough time to ref, to deal with all of the comments and concerns that we've had tonight and give us some time to, to do some revisiting of the bylaw and the battery storage and whatnot.
Mr. Chair, on a procedural issue for the continuance to the 20th, or to the 13th, I will not be here, but I will commit to my obligation to review the video and sign the certification that I did review the video of the meeting. I can't, I can't be here.
Right, no, I understand.
No, but I just want to assure the applicant, we, because if, if I miss a meeting and I don't do that, then I get taken out of the.
Right, out of the equation, yeah.
Then I guess Sherri gets to vote, but.
I haven't seen all the, all the meetings.
Yeah, we need to have, make sure we have a full board for these decisions.
Yeah, yeah, without a doubt. So, like I said, the 20, we can do one of two things. It's up to you. We can schedule it for the 23rd, put you last on the agenda, and you can run the risk of, of us running out of time. Or we can put it off till the 13th. I, I will defer that decision to you.
And the early February meeting?
13th.
There wa, there wasn't one before then?
No, there wasn't, no.
Is there one after?
There is.
27.
It'll be the 27th.
Will the board be present?
I will be here at the 20.
He'll be back from his trip, yeah.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Jane may have jumped overboard by then.
She'll still be on her way back.
Yeah, true. Yeah, so, I mean, February 27th gives you gobs of time to work out the details and it gives you a full board when you come back.
Yeah, and I'm more concerned about the full board than the, you know, I don't want to open up a public meeting, you know, come the 13th and the 27th.
Well, I, I believe as long as I review the, the video, I'm.
Yeah, he'll be, and he's, Carl is crazy about detail, so he'll have reviewed the video and be up to speed on anything that happens beforehand if you decide to go to the 13th.
I don't, I don't know, unless somebody brings yet another new piece of information.
The only difficulty would be trying to have a vote on the 13th.
Oh, please, I, my request would be, no matter what, when we close the hearing, we don't vote that night.
Right.
We need, we need. Mr. Buckland gave us a draft that we need to start thinking about. We need to, to be able to work through how we're going to, individually, how we're, and collectively, how we're going to articulate our decision.
Yep.
And it has to be, has to be, I think, well thought. And, and I think perhaps having time after the public hearing is closed for some deliberation in public wouldn't be a bad thing.
Nope, not at all, I agree.
Agreed.
And that's, so the lucky date is?
Yeah, I, I think February 13th would, would make sense. Appreciate, appreciate your commitment.
Right, I can't, I can't Zoom. I'm going to be in the, the.
He's going to be living in a mud hut.
In Kenya, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to be.
All right, so we'll schedule it for the 13th.
John, can you put that in writing, please?
What's that?
Put that in writing.
Yeah, we need, we need the, the request in writing.
The continu, right, request for continuation has to be in writing.
Thank you. Email will be fine.
Sure.
Yep, all right, so do we need to take a formal vote?
Yes.
Okay, so, entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for 3321 Wareham PV1 LLC, zero Route 25, to the regularly scheduled planning board meeting of February 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett, all in favor. Jane, wake up.
Aye.
Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Jane?
Aye.
Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you all very much.
I know, we're not, we can't discuss business, but perhaps you and Mr. Buckland.